Good evening, everyone. It's Wednesday, April 6, 2022, at 5:00 p.m. This is a special meeting of Pacific Grove City Council, and I'll call the meeting to order and note that all council members are here, present. And then go to our city clerk. We have one item to begin, remote teleconference, AB 361. Ms. Kandell?
Thank you, Mayor. Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, staff and members of the public. As you know, Assembly Bill 361 requires the city within 30 days of holding a virtual meeting for the first time, and every 30 days they're average to make findings ratifying the state of the emergency. I have conferred with our city attorney. There's no indication at this time that the governor's emergency order has been lifted as to COVID and Brown Act requirements. And so they, remote, remote meetings, that this is still necessary. The council must renew the effect of the resolution by ratifying it and/or adopting another. And so staff recommends that the council ratify Resolution 21-029, Emergency Teleconferencing Authorizing Remote Teleconference Meetings of All City Legislative Bodies for the following 30 days in accord with the Ralph M. Brown Act. That concludes staff's report.
Do we have any public comment?
I see no virtual public comment, sir.
All right, we'll bring it back to council. Any council discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, 7-0. We have two items on closed session agenda, Conference with Labor Negotiators, the employees, city manager Ben Harvey, and also Public Employment, city manager, performance evaluation. They have a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We'll now adjourn to closed session and will be returning at 6:00 p.m. In open session for the regular meeting. Thank you. Hello, good evening. It's Wednesday, April 6, 2022. At 6:00 p.m., it's a regular meeting of the Pacific Grove City Council. And I'll call the meeting to order, and just a moment, Councilmember Emilio will sit down and we'll all be here and present. So now I'll turn to Councilmember Padori to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll go to approval of the agenda. Ms. Hunter has asked for reverse hearing of items 12A and 12B. That is here, the report on the housing element before Project Home Key. And then also, I just had a few comments about what lately has been our never-ending agenda, where we've had to continue items into the future, sometimes considerably into the future. And it was about two years ago that we had lengthy council discussions and seemed to settle on the fact that everyone preferred the, just the two council meetings a month with the special meeting starting at 5:00. So for a total of 10-plus hours of meeting a month. And I think what we're seeing, at least that for the present, is that that's not enough time to get our business done. And in the interests of good governance, we need to act on things on time and take care of our business as it comes before us. So I'm thinking that when we get to a point where we're continuing three, four items, that we need a special meeting and one that most likely would be called the Wednesday in between our regularly scheduled council meetings. So would that be happy to hear a motion or further comments as to how we can manage our agendas, particularly tonight. Mayor Protem McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for bringing this up. So as Mayor Protem, I do attend the Advanced Agenda Review Meetings, and I have made suggestions to the city manager as far as asking staff to identify directly on the agenda what is important, you know, that needs to be addressed time-wise. So we, at 8:00 at our break, can identify, you know, if we need to move around the agenda. I haven't really seen that happen yet, but I'm hoping that maybe that will get implemented. And also in the Advanced Agenda Meetings, something too is the, and a fellow colleague will join, a council member will join that meeting. But what I have seen in my time attending those is that the agenda at that time, which would be tomorrow morning, looks completely different than what we're sent on Thursday or Friday before the meetings. And so I don't know if maybe the Advanced Agenda Meeting needs to move to not be directly the morning after the council meeting. That could be an idea. But and I'm proud, I'm very proud of our work, right? Like, we're getting stuff done. We're getting a lot done. So I am grateful to that, and I'm grateful to staff, but, you know, I do agree that going till 11:30 at night and having, you know, 12 to 13 hours of meetings a month, it is, you know, challenging, right? Like, come 10:00, I am fried. I've worked all, I think a lot of us worked, we're coming from work, like, I'm at capacity. So I was open to having a special meeting, but I think when we discussed this a couple of years ago, the whole point was to be more efficient. To not be, we could have meetings every week and not get everything done, right? So you know, I think before we go into having just sort of a set special meeting, I would really like to see efforts to make the agenda and meetings more effective and efficient. So, thank you.
Councilmember Emilio?
Thank you, Mayor. My suggestion is to, when we come to the agenda item, to stay on topic on the agenda item and not what I call a bird walk. I think we need to stay on topic in the agenda item, which is, which has items on it that we should stay on those particular items rather than bird walk. That's my suggestion.
Councilmember Smith?
Now I'm hot. Okay, there we go. Yeah, I think I like some of those suggestions from both my colleagues. I think that we can stay on topic better, and there's relevance issues. I think sometimes public comment is outside topic as well. And so we need to rein that in. I definitely don't support another meeting. I think we, you know, we're meeting quite a bit. We're already having several special meetings, so I think that's as needed. And but yeah, I would, I would say also we can limit our number of comments per item. You know, it's sometimes necessary, but it's not always necessary. And I think just using our best judgment as to when that would be the case. And that's like kind of a self-policing thing a little bit, but obviously the chair has some input on that, but there's a self-policing item there. And I think that's about all, that's all I know about it.
Councilmember Padori?
Thank you, Mayor. I echo some of the comments that my fellow council members have also proposed. I'm not in favor of having other. I'm not in favor of.
Oh, sorry, this distance away. I got trained. Too close is not good.
Too close is not good, okay? So, thank you for that, too. The, my view is that we should not get into another Wednesday special meetings because I think that'll set a precedent, and I think it'll go in another direction altogether. So we should make things more efficient. I believe the staff is working on at least identifying the priority items for every, for every report that comes in. And I think if that agenda items are prioritized and the council knows of them beforehand, we'll be able to act upon them, at least for the priority items, right before everything else, so we can tackle it. The other option, which was mentioned by Councilmember Smith, is I think we can all do a good job in kind of like limiting comments related to public, especially when there are more than a few commenters on the same subject, to make it two minutes. I think that's a good use of everybody's time. Thank you.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for bringing this up. I agree with what's been said. I think on occasion, maybe once or twice a year, we would need to have a special meeting to help in the, you know, there's going to be times throughout a year, a calendar year, where we get behind. And it may be something we can't predict when that happens. So in that instance, I would support a special meeting. But I think what's happening to us is there's a kind of a menu of things that we could do better at, and that's what I'm hearing. So staff has recently started to put on the time-sensitive items. So if we can make those stand out a little bit more, because I, I don't know if I can tell which ones they are. I agree that the Advanced Agenda Meeting is very quick to be the next morning. So maybe a couple hours into that day would be better, so that it gives staff a little bit of time to react to what just happened the night before. And but I, you know, I would want to know staff's opinion about that, but maybe not way further in the week, but maybe noon or so instead of 8:00 a.m. on Thursday. But then the biggest strides we'll make is on this dais, and it is, you know, repeating each other. I think we got into a habit on Zoom of just, you know, continuing to unmute and be called upon over and over again and getting many bites at the apple. I'm easily to blame. And so if we can clean up our approach to where we're very prepared and we make our comments and try to only speak once if we can and be concise. The mayor is very nice in letting us speak many times, but try to, try to limit it, and it'll help us go a little bit faster. So, and then in instances when we see a lot of participation, just automatically going to the two minutes for a public comment instead of three minutes, and reminding the public that we read the emails that are sent to us. And so having someone stand and read it to us is not always necessary. And, and so we've, we've read the words. They're, they're actually, I much prefer to read them on, at my own pace as well, actually. So I like reading the emails, so keep those coming. And then the bird walking, I've never heard that analysis, but really, I think that means getting in the weeds on things. And so if we can stay at the level of policy decision-making and give the, the homework assignment, if you will, back to staff rather than doing it up here on the dais, that will, that will help a lot as, as well. So I'm not sure, Mayor, if that's helpful, but I think your question was, can we have a special meeting? Certainly, when we've got off track, but I don't want to have that be our crutch when we have some improvements we can make.
Councilmember Bocletti?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I, I disagree with a few of the points that have been made. I think public comment is not only for the benefit of council, but is also for the benefit of the public that is watching us, will watch us later on, on the video recording, et cetera, and getting into the weeds, that's our job. So if it requires it, and a lot of the times it does, and I don't want to see us get hamstrung just for a perceived effect of being efficient. I would rather see us come to good decisions. And that takes deliberation. It takes many bites at the apple sometimes. And sometimes it requires that we get prepared earlier rather than later. Some of these agenda items show up and they say, we need to rush this. You know, we need to get this in so we can get this graph, you know, and then we don't get time to think or deliberate. That's not fair either. So I have, I'm a longtime viewer of city council meetings. Decades, I suppose, at this point. And special meetings are not uncommon. They come up when they're necessary. And I have no problem having a meeting, an extra meeting if necessary, to come to the good decisions that the people elected us to, to decide. So, and I would never support limiting public comment. Those are my thoughts for now. Thank you.
May I hear? Yes?
Motion to approve the agenda, Your Honor, with this, with the modification that you suggested.
Second?
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we're now on to item presentations. We've got three presentations. One is on, could you put them up on the screen, please? Do we have that capability? The proclamations.
Give me a minute, I can.
Okay, well, I'll start talking. In any case, so the first one is proclamation declaring April 29, 2022 as Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agricultural Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees, now called Arbor Day, which is observed throughout the nation. Trees, green space beautifies our city, improves mental and physical health and the environment. Now, therefore, I, Bill Peak, Mayor of Pacific Grove, on behalf of the city, hereby proclaim April 29, 2022 as Arbor Day in support of efforts to protect and grow trees throughout our city. All right, moving on to the second one. I'm going to do all three and then ask for any comments from council, right? I thought that would be quicker. Mayor's proclamation, Fair Housing Month, April 2022, whereas the city of Pacific Grove celebrates the month of April as the anniversary of the establishment of the Fair Housing Act. This act outlines a national policy of fair housing for all individuals who live in the United States. And the Fair Housing Act protects individuals from discrimination based on race, color, sex, disability, religion, family status, and national origin. Now, therefore, I, Bill Peak, Mayor of Pacific Grove, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Fair Housing Month, advocating for equal housing opportunities for all residents and prospective residents of our fair city. And the last proclamation is National Library Week, April 3 through 9. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions, often the heart of their cities, towns, and schools, and libraries serve people of all ages, interests, and backgrounds, providing resources and space to engage in lifelong learning. And libraries are a resource for all, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or social economic status. Now, therefore, I, Bill Peak, Mayor of Pacific Grove, do hereby proclaim National Library Week, April 3 through 9, and I encourage all residents to visit our wonderful library and explore all it has to offer. And that concludes our presentations. Any council comments on that? Anyone? All right. I guess Mayor Protem McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I wanted to speak on the Fair Housing Month proclamation. As I can appreciate the proclamation, and really since I've been on council every April, we have proclaimed April as Fair Housing Month. And I hope that the, this proclamation would also expand to our community beyond the dais here. And so that would be landlords, property managers, being kinder to our homeless residents and so forth. Because, you know, housing is so key to the quality of life, mental health, addiction issues, and on and on and on. And we have a lot of residents who are struggling to keep a roof over their head and not become homeless, and homeless meaning either living in their vehicles or living in a hotel. So, so thank you for proclaiming April as Fair Housing Month.
Now I'll turn to our city attorney for a report out on closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council did meet in closed session at 5:00 p.m. for the two items on the agenda. Conference with labor negotiators and public, city manager performance evaluation. As to both of those items, council's discussion was focused on process. No substantive decisions were made. That concludes my report.
Mr. Harvey, do you have any staff announcements?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have four this evening. One for Mr. Kissimmee, one for Ms. Kandell, one for Mr. Go, and one for myself. I'd like to start with Mr. Kissimmee.
Welcome.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the council, staff, and members of the public. I would like to make a quick announcement regarding an upcoming change on our website. We're making a minor change to our city's website homepage by bringing the Discover Pacific Grove section from the bottom of our homepage to the top, replacing the sliding images section on the top. We're making this change to facilitate ease of navigation to leisure, residence, and business sections on our website. This change is scheduled to be implemented on this Friday, the 8th, April 8th, at 7:00 a.m. Our deputy clerk, I believe, Ms. Lindstrom, if she can please share the before and after screenshots that visualizes this change. So this is our current homepage as it is now, and come Friday, this will be the change. And that concludes my brief announcement. Thank you.
Thank you. I just would like to embellish that. Nothing is being removed from the website or the front page, just the bottom is being brought up. And again, that's Friday. We'll also make an announcement in the city manager's report this week about that. Ms. Kandell, please.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. I just wanted to remind everyone, and I'm a little bit more prepared with details this meeting, of our special election on April 12. There is early voting going on at the Monterey County Elections Department Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, with extended hours from 7 to 8 p.m. on April 12. There is also early voting, I mean, yeah, early voting here in, in Pacific Grove Council Chamber on Friday, April 8, and Monday, April 11, from 9 to 3 p.m. Ballot return locations are, of course, the Monterey County Elections Department, this Pacific Grove City Hall. 24-hour ballot box is available as well, and of course, polling places will be open from 7 to 8 p.m. on Tuesday, April 12. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Go, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Harvey. Mayor Peak, members of the city council, this announcement is intended to provide you with an update on the installation of the water line on Ocean View Boulevard, which is being performed by California American Water. I want to provide this update as I'm aware that the council has received several emails on this item, and I'm sure there will be public comment tonight, including comment from a Cal-Am representative. Cal-Am has concluded the work adjacent to the Fifth Street Rookery by completing the installation of the water pipe on Ocean View and are continuing now to install the water pipe at our past Ninth Street. Following today, crews will continue to move west towards Lover's Point away from the Rookeries until Monday, April 11, at which time it's anticipated that all the underground activities will conclude. Cal-Am will still need to pressure test and connect service lines, but this won't be done until after May unless there's unforeseen circumstances that arise. All residents along Ocean View Boulevard will still have potable water service. As you've seen, the city is simultaneously conducting our fiscal year 2122 road rehabilitation project on Ocean View. We've been doing that work down by Lover's Point. We were going to shift and move over to Ninth Street between Ninth and Carmel, which is still well aware, away from the harbor seals, but we've also decided to pause all of our activities until after May. As always, I'm always available via the phone or via email if members of the public, council members, or any other city staff have any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Go. Lastly, I just want the council and the public to be aware that on Friday, we will be launching the inaugural city manager report quarterly roll-up. This is a summary of the greatest hits of the city manager's report from the last quarter. So you'll see two publications on Friday, the normal city manager's report that comes out following the council meeting, and then this inaugural roll-up of the greatest hits from the past quarter. So look for both of those. I just want to make you aware of that. Thank you.
Before we go, thank you, before we go to council comments, I'd like to recognize David Pizzini from Cal-Am. There's a few comments about their work on Ocean View Boulevard. Welcome. Is that? Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and city council. My name is David Pizzini. I'm an engineering project manager with California American Water. I want to give an update to the work on Ocean View Boulevard Water Main Replacement Project, similar to what Dan Go has just provided. The project has consisted of three separate segments of water main replacement to be installed in advance of the city pavement project, running from 2nd to 5th, 7th to 11th, and a segment at Lover's Point along Ocean View Boulevard. The coordination of projects with the city helps protect the quality of the road surface and avoid cost to repairing new roads, as well as giving the community a new water line infrastructure. As of today, we have completed installation along 2nd to 5th, the segment along Lover's Point, and have installed water main from 7th to just shy of 10th Street. We appreciate the city and public making us aware of the issues and concerns related to the harbor seals that this work has caused. In order to address those concerns, as Dan mentioned, Cal-Am is preparing to have the mainline installation to 11th installed and the area cleared by Monday, April 11, and thus postponing all remaining construction activities within the 2nd to 11th area until after May. Cal-Am will resume to finalize the connections after May and testing before transferring over the, from the existing main to the newly installed water main. And currently, there are no interruptions to customers within this project area. I want to make it known that Cal-Am will be finalizing a final connection near the segment at Lover's Point within the next couple of weeks, so we will still be working there, just not in the segment from 11th to 2nd Street. I thank you all and appreciate all of your time. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to council for comments, announcements. Mayor Protem McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the fentanyl town hall that Pacific Grove Unified School District gave on the 28th, and there was over 250 participants via Zoom and in person. So I wanted to commend and thank the Pacific Grove Police Department, Commander Santos and Chief Madeline, you're here, on the recent arrest of a fentanyl dealer. Hopefully, maybe you'll be making an announcement about that. But the dealer that was arrested was linked to one of the minor overdoses that we had in Pacific Grove. And fortunately, this young person recovered. And I've also asked the chief to perhaps reach out to the doctors at CHOP to get a, some fentanyl at the police department that can be distributed to residents who would like them. Narcan, sorry, yes. Not fentanyl, thank you. Narcan. And then Ms. Kandell, I, you have some of the slides to bring up. Last week, I had a youth meetup at Mountain Mike's Pizza. Um, last week I had a youth meetup at Mountain Mike's Pizza. And um, I invited uh, the youth to come have pizza. Talk to me. I wanted to hear, you know, how the city can be uh, better. Uh, participants come and their parents and um, a skate park was the talk of the evening. Um, we really had a great time and uh, it was lovely to connect with uh, with the younger people. Uh, in our community and one of them also brought me uh, this lovely flyer. So we had a great time. I would encourage my colleagues to reach out to the kids in our community and parents. Of course, the parents are. Coaching soccer and baseball and softball and all of the above and really involved. So. Uh, thanks so much. We had a good time.
That's a member of Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, is Allison Hunter online here?
Yes, she is.
Okay. Um, Allison, I just wanted to recognize you uh, for all you've done. And uh, along with several projects, ATC, the Pacific Grove Hotel, the Five Twenty Lighthouse, along with many other projects. And um, we're gonna be in the future, sorry to see you go and however, it is lucky for City of Marina uh, to have you.
Very much.
Right now, uh, turning to general public comment, uh, I can see for those uh, might be interested. I see we have forty-six. Participants virtual. I suspect about half of them are staff. Um, so maybe twenty plus. So, and then we've got. It seems to be normally six people in the audience. Come see us in person uh, sometime. We're here. Do we have anyone wishing to make public comment? How many do we have? If if everyone wishing to make public comment virtually, would you please all raise your hand right now, your virtual hand? And I don't, I don't have this information, so I'm.
Nine people.
Nine, okay. Um, let's just uh, do that number. Let's do three minutes. But if you can keep your comments under three minutes, that would be appreciated too. Who's first?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Beth, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Beth, you'll need to unmute yourself. Beth, you have the floor.
All right, I suggest.
We can just barely hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry. Um, I wasn't really expecting to speak, but um, since you called me, I will. Um, I just wanted to support the Home Key Project and um, encourage the council to. You know, be as um. Positive as you can about it. I, I really think it would be a good project for us and I.
This item is on the agenda later.
Thanks. Thank you, Beth. This item is on our agenda. Could you hold your comments till we get to that agenda item?
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Tom Aikman, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hello, thank you. Uh, this is about the, the harbor seal disruption caused by that pipeline problem down on Ocean View. Um, this was, this has, this was very badly timed. And it has caused a lot of disruption in our harbor seal puppings. That should be going on right across the street right now. There have been some premature births. There have been some abandonments. There have been some things that just didn't need to happen. This was so very unavoidable. So very avoidable. The project was ill timed. The city staff made a mistake apparently back in December when Cal A M asked about a permit to replace a water main on Ocean View Boulevard. Uh, when that was on the city council agenda on March the second. We told you then that this was plainly a mistake for such work to be near a seal rookery during the pupping season. We asked the council to postpone the project. We cited that the ordinance adopted in two thousand and thirteen was partially intended to avoid this kind of disruption. There are state laws involved. There are federal laws involved. And there are a number of environmental policies in our new local coastal plan that should have prohibited this. The council ignored us and voted six to one to continue with this work. I was disappointed by the vote and I couldn't decide whether it was arrogance or ignorance. Still not sure. But I know it's caused a problem and it's disrupted the harbor seal pupping that's been going on along the rec trail for twenty-five years. It's drawn the attention of federal regulators and it's angered a lot of people and it hasn't stopped as soon as the city said it would. We've got uh. We've got pregnant harbor seals that are avoiding the pupping sites that they've usually gone to. And we got other problems going on that I can enumerate if you want. Uh, again, we tried to avoid this with our two thousand and thirteen, but. If the city chooses to ignore its own laws, what the hell chance does wildlife have? Maybe more importantly, this has been an example to be cited in the future. In opposition to that monstrous hotel complex you're so proud of. If replacing a pipeline under a street creates this much noise and disturbance. Imagine what it will sound like when forty-three thousand tons of granite rock. Will be drilled, scraped and excavated from the earth across the street. Loaded into three thousand six hundred trucks and hauled away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Angie Watson, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Yes, hello everyone. My name is Angie Watson. Hi, to know. And I am the Fair Housing Coordinator at Echo Housing and I want to thank you, Mayor Peak and city council members for recognizing. National Fair Housing Month. Um, I want to talk a little bit about Echo Housing for those of you who may not be familiar with our. Our agency. We are a nonprofit housing counseling agency. We're one of the oldest fair housing groups in the country. We've been doing fair housing. Here in California now since nineteen sixty-four and we've been providing for housing services here in. Pacific Grove for the past five years or so. And we investigate discrimination complaints in housing. We also provide education, counseling, mediation services for both tenants and landlords. We also have a tenant landlord program that helps tenants and landlords know what their rights and responsibilities are. And I want to invite the public to two fair housing workshops that we're gonna be doing pretty soon. Um, the first one's gonna happen next week. On the fourteenth from six PM to eight PM on Zoom and it's gonna be basically focusing. Um, the workshop for landlords and property managers. And then we'll have, the following week, we'll have another workshop on the twenty-first. Also from six PM to eight PM for tenants. And you'll have a chance to learn about the protected classes and what fair housing is, illegal barriers. And if you are interested in coming to one of these workshops, you can go to the Pacific Grove website. We have our flyers there posted. And you'll get more information about the workshops. Um, you'll also have my contact information. If you want to get ahold of me, if you have a housing issue that we can help you with. Please do contact us. And it also will be a link there um, attached to the flyer that you can sign up and be part of our events. So thank you once again. And thank you for your commitment to um, to fair housing um, in this wonderful city of Pacific Grove. Thank you.
Thank you.
Inga Lawrence and Dimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to thank that nice lady that just spoke about the housing workshops. And I signed up for both, but unfortunately, she scheduled one at the same time. As a planning commission meeting and I will be at the planning commission meeting. So there's a little problem with scheduling with other meetings. Um, uh, in the council discussion about um. How to do a more efficient. Um, meeting so that more agenda items were heard. Uh, yes, staying on topic is a good topic is a good thought. I would also like to say that the reason some members of the public read. Their letters into, they want them in the public record and whereas you council members see all the letters that have been written. The general public doesn't see any of that. They used to be on the table when we came in. Some of them were printed out for us. When we got them in on time that we could see what other members of the public had spoken, you know, had written to you. But we don't see them all. So it is very informative for the public involvement. To hear what other people say, even if they read their letter because we don't see them. So I would like to put that out to you as to look at that from our point of view. Because that is incredibly important to know what's going on. So I appreciate that and I appreciate because no good decisions are ever made after ten o'clock at night and we know that one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lisa Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. The announcements by Dan Go and Mr. Pizzini are welcome and appreciated. It's still important to recognize that public works, public works inadvertently or somehow planned the street project on Ocean View Boulevard. Along with the related Cal A M project to extend during the entire seal pupping season. And the Community Development Department provided a CDP exemption, failing to recognize the risk of substantial adverse impact. On environmentally sensitive habitat area, which is what the Seal Rookery at Fifth Street is. That's defined in PG's local coastal program. The Community Development Department Planner actually stated on the exemption notice that quote. The proposed development is without risk of adverse environmental effect on coastal resources and quote. That statement is absolutely wrong and reflects ignorance of PG's LCP and also ignorance of PG's coastal resources. Residents who have followed the review process for the ATC project know that harbor seals are very sensitive to noise. And the whole colony can be flushed from the beach at great risk to pups and stressing all the seals. Repeated disturbance of that kind is harmful to the health of the seals. City staff has not been transparent about this project and as a result, there was no opportunity to avoid or minimize risk to seals. The noise has been going on for over two months adjacent to the Seal Rookery at Fifth Street and very nearby. If the Community Development Department cannot acknowledge its mistakes, as the director has made it very clear that she does not. It is imperative that council demonstrate responsible stewardship of PG's harbor seals and insist on education for staff. Both CDD and Public Works in the LCP policies and ordinances. And insist on education for staff regarding Pacific Grove's natural resources. And of course, the crews should be educated during a pre-construction meeting. Tom and Kim Aikman are highly capable of providing education on PG's harbor seals and do it all the time on, including on television. The city needs to develop best management practices to protect our celebrated diversity of precious natural resources. Of course, a wildlife protection commission could facilitate development of those practices. I hope we have truly seen the end of disturbance to the seals during this year's pupping season and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. I am really actually embarrassed by this city. As Lisa spoke, we do educate people about the harbor seals we have for years and many other areas and dozens. And to have our own city violate the Marine Mammal Protection Act, the local coastal plan. And our own seal ordinance is pretty disheartening. You always talk about what's best for business and tourism. But here you did this and we have many tourists that come every year to see these harbor seals. It has damaged this pupping season. We don't know the effect yet. We have a little ways to go. But instead of limiting public comment, why don't you listen to some of the public comment? We told you this and you did it anyway. I mean, this is just outrageous. You guys have been putting the fence up for years. You know when the pupping season is. I mean, I'd be happy to give a class to the Pacific Grove Council, the staff, whoever. So that everybody understands how the harbor seals react, when they're there, when they're not. Um, I mean, this is just, I don't even know what to say. I'm just, I'm just really ashamed. Um, instead of patting yourselves on the back for doing all these hotels and stuff, listen, just listen to us for a change. We are the community out here. We live here. There's a lot of people that have a lot of knowledge out here and you just want to kind of shut us down. That's wrong. So why don't you just come out there and see our harbor seals and see what we're talking about? The damage has been done this season. I hope that it never happens again. And whatever you have to do to make sure that doesn't happen again, please do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori McDonald, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak and um, thank you to all the other people. I'm also speaking on behalf of the seals. I, I also am very concerned that six of the seven members of our city council have voted to willfully violate the Marine Mammal Protection Act, our local coastal plan, our own seal ordinance. Seems particularly disheartening when we violate our own ordinances that are meant to protect them. And also the demonstrations, both visual and spoken by the public at prior city council meetings. It feels like. No matter how much we're allowed to be heard, we aren't really being heard when things like this happen. Um, and so while we're very happy that the city is finally moving and soon stopping the project, it really shouldn't have happened in the first place. And I'm very concerned that it took public outcry to fight for the protection of the marine mammals here. And that we're, and we're entrusted to protect them. And it's an annual event. There's no, I mean, there's a calendar. We know when they come, we know when they go. And it's just very disheartening when we're trying to ask the public to be quiet and the city is making so much noise. Um, as, as Tom Aikman mentioned, we have witnessed three seals go into premature labor. This results in the death of their pups. Very likely due to the stresses they've experienced because, you know, we know that they're disturbed by the noise. And this results in the dead pups actually being left on the beach and subject to predation by seagulls and vultures. And we then have to explain to the public why. The vultures are eating a dead pup on the beach. And so that is really disheartening as well and very disturbing. Um, so as a resident of Pacific Grove and a firm believer that it is our responsibility as humans to protect rather than damage our natural environment. I'm very disheartened and upset that our city council demonstrated a blatant disregard, not only for the health of our protected seals. But also the laws that protect them in approving this work. And our unparalleled coastal environment and the wild creatures that inhabit them are a crucial part of what makes Pacific Grove so special. We say we want to draw tourists in. This draws them in and then they're disturbed by what they see. And so I think we really need to pay more attention to this and, and. Maintain the experience and the beauty and the magic of Pacific Grove that they come here to see. So I implore you as our representatives to please honor the laws that protect our environment. And allow it to remain an amazing and special place, not only for all of those who live here, love Pacific Grove. And love everything in our natural environment, including the seals. But also it's a huge draw for visitors from all over the world. So I just implore you to please. In the future, as Kim mentioned, the damage this year may have already been done, but please in the future, keep this in mind and. Keep Pacific Grove the special place that it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marge Brigadier, you have the floor.
Welcome.
I want to start by thanking Luke Cluddy. For being the only person that spoke up against this roadwork. Because it was in violation of the LCP. When I spoke to the NOAA Enforcement Officer about this issue. He had been told this was emergency work. It was not emergency work. And that is, I guess you could call that fake news. The last thing I want to speak on, I've heard about the Wildlife Commission that's being considered. And then we heard that the city manager would rather have only the former animal control officer speak on the wildlife. If this is true, you really need to change the course and go back to a commission. You need people who know about the wildlife and care about the wildlife and you need more than one person. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other hands are raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll close public, general public comment. And we'll now turn to the consent agenda. I'd like to pull item 7A. That's a Munich code 23.73.050. That's time limits on the water wait list. Move that to 12C, 12CAT. Are there any other items council wishes to pull from the consent agenda? Seeing none, are there any items? Oh, council member Claddy. Okay, that's item 9A. I mean, sorry, 9B, 9B. All right, let's make that 12D then. Okay, are there any items the public wishes to pull from the consent agenda?
We do have somebody virtually, Lisa Chiani.
I'd like to pull 6B, the grant funding for coastal hazards, LCP amendment, and 9A.
Okay, let's let's hear 5B. Let's hear that as 12, 12G. I'm sorry, oh, 6B, sorry, 6B. As 12D. A, B, C. Sorry, my notes. 12E and then 9A will be 12F.
Move the consent agenda with the recommended changes.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries 6-1, council member Smith dissenting. All right, quickly what we've just done. We've approved council minutes from March 16th. We've approved a resolution supporting the Act of People Healthy Nation, a national incentive. We've received minutes of Monterey Salinas Transit Board Authority from February. We've received a report on management system and posting of online agreements. And we've received minutes from the Planning Commission, January and February, the Traffic Safety Commission, January and the, and also October, January. Looks like every meeting of the Traffic Safety Committee in 2021. So it looks like we cleared up the backlog. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I believe you skipped over 9C and that was the Caltronics.
Okay, I'm, thank you for that.
Just wanted to include that.
Too many across the Caltronics. Yes, we've authorized a contract with Caltronics Business Systems for leasing of printers, print services. Thank you for that. Takes everybody up here to keep this agenda going. All right, now we're on to our regular agenda. We have first public hearing, AB 481. Ordinance adding PGMC 1145 military equipment. Chief Madalone and Commander Santos, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council members, city staff. It's good now? Okay, there we go. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, city staff and members of the public. If I could ask Ms. Lindstrom to share my PowerPoint and while she's doing that, if you don't mind, I'd like to give a little update on what Mayor Protem McAdams said. So on April 16th of 2020, we responded to a call of an overdose. Officers along with AMR and Monterey Fire Department responded and a juvenile was revived by Officer Acevedo by deploying Narcan, which she carries. We conducted a thorough investigation and work with our federal partners at the DEA led by Corporal Amy Lonsinger and subsequently Xavier Jimenez Robledo, a 19-year-old of Seaside, was arrested and convicted of selling counterfeit pills, M30 Percocet pills laced with fentanyl. He was, sir, he was sentenced to serve eight years in federal prison, along with paying monetary fines. I applaud the efforts of my team and thank our partners at the DEA. We will continue to use our resources and work with our federal partners to arrest dealers selling drugs in our city, along with continuing to educate the public on the dangers of fentanyl. I'd like to thank PGUSD for putting on their town hall meeting on the 28th. And I'd like to stress that if you do locate any of these pills or paraphernalia, the things that they showed you during their PowerPoints, don't touch them. It's very, very potent. Please call us and we will take care of it. And I am working with the doctors, Dr. Close and Dr. Grover on coordinating an Narcan distribution event here in the city. And we will be sharing this information on our social media. Thank you. So tonight, we will be, we're here to request approval of a military use policy and ordinance, which is a requirement of AB 481. Next slide, please. AB 481 was signed by Governor Newsom on September 30th, 2021. The bill will allow the public an opportunity to participate in government decisions to fund, acquire or use military equipment and provide meaningful input and feedback. It also sets safeguards, including transparency, oversight and accountability measures to protect the public's welfare, safety, civil rights and civil liberties for the funding, acquisition or use of military equipment. Next slide, please. The bill requires council approval of a military policy and ordinance to allow us to continue to use the equipment we currently have. This equipment has been in place well before this bill and each of the policies pertaining to the equipment we carry have been forward-facing on our public website since January of 2020. It also requires council approval to fund or acquire additional defined military equipment. Tonight, we are not seeking approval to purchase or acquire any additional equipment, just the continued use of the current resources we have. The bill will require the police department to conduct an annual meeting for the public and return to council for your review and vote on the use, funding and acquisition of defined military equipment. Our plan is to conduct public meetings in the month of March and present the annual report at the first meeting in April of each calendar year, unless directed otherwise by you this evening. Next slide, please. The police department is required to host a public meeting within 30 days of returning to council and then present the annual report to council, which will include a summary of how military equipment was used and the purpose of its use and a summary of complaints or concerns related to military equipment and actions taken in response. The results of any internal audits regarding violations of the military equipment use policy and any actions taken in response. The total annual cost for each type of military equipment, including acquisition, personnel, training, transportation, maintenance, storage, upgrade or any other ongoing costs and how funds were sourced in the calendar year following submission of the annual military equipment report. How many of each of the defined pieces of military equipment we have and if we intend to acquire any additional equipment. Next slide, please. AB 481 defines 15 items to be considered military equipment. We currently have two 40-millimeter projectile launchers, which are capable of shooting a 40-millimeter foam tipped round and five less lethal shotguns, which are capable of shooting a 12-gauge beanbag round. The 40-millimeter launcher enables us to use less lethal impact munitions. This allows officers to address a threat from a greater distance and provides alternative options for deadly force when reasonable. The less lethal beanbag shotguns also allow officers to confront a potentially armed or dangerous suspect at a longer distance. This too can potentially prevent a deadly force encounter. When necessary, there is no alternative to these less lethal weapons. Although AB 481 specifically states specialized weapons of 50 caliber or less that are standard issue weapons are exempt from reporting, we have included our department issued rifles for your, your review and the community review. So for rifles, we have 22 patrol rifles, which are specialized rifles and ammunition, including assault weapons that enable officers, when in compliance with our stringent use of force policy, to address medium to long-distance threats or those threats who are heavily armed, armored or both. Further, in both short and long-distance deployments, rifles allow officers precision shot placement, minimizing the risk to officers and innocent community members. And there are no known alternatives to these weapons that will provide the same level of distance or precision. Officers are trained in the care and use of each of these weapons. Post-approved instructors conduct training on each of these weapons and confirms proficiency before officers are authorized to carry and deploy them. Officers are instructed several times per year on our use of force policy, detailing when force either less lethal or lethal could be authorized. In addition, they are trained on de-escalation techniques and the duty to intervene when necessary. Next slide, please. Pacific Grove Police Department participates with the Monterey Peninsula Special Response Unit, which is the SRU, and provides and receives mutual aid from and to surrounding law enforcement partners. Currently, we have one member on the crisis negotiation team and no members on the SRU team. Within the SRU team, there are additional defined military weapons. However, none are owned or deployed by members of our department. So each of the agencies who are participating members and have additional equipment per AB 481 are required to abide by 481 and seek approval from their respective councils, just as we are tonight. Any deployment of SRU equipment will be documented or reported annually to the council and to our community. Next slide, please. When dealing with critical incidents, we are always concerned about actions, capabilities and intentions of all involved. The equipment we have enable us to take cover, use distance and take time to de-escalate situations for peaceful resolutions, which is our goal when dealing with critical incidents such as actor shooter, barricaded subjects and bank panic alarms, to name a few. Our officers use scenario-based training to prepare for real-life stressful situations. In the past, law enforcement followed a traditional strategy of waiting for multiple highly-trained tactical teams to arrive to formulate a structured and deliberate plan that may include surrounding the building, setting up a perimeter, containing the damage and slowly and methodically conducting room-by-room sweeps of the facility to locate and stop the threat. When we look back to critical incidents which played a part in what changed the traditional methods and weapons, the first was the 1997 West Hollywood Bank robbery. Officers were simply outgunned on that day. The other was a Columbine High School massacre. The Columbine incident became one of the most studied actor shooter massacres, resulting the introduction of the new methods and reproaches to responding to threats immediately, namely rapid deployment. Rapid deployment is defined as the swift and immediate deployment of law enforcement resources, singular or in teams, to ongoing life-threatening situations where delayed deployment could otherwise result in the death or great bodily injury to innocent persons. For this approach, the first arriving officer on scene takes charge and neutralizes a threat. This places regular officers in situations of increased risk and to achieve this goal, additional training and specialized equipment are required. Next slide, please. Locally, we are not immune from critical incidents. In 2020, our department had the most callouts from the SRU assistants. As you can see from the chart in PG and in the surrounding area, there have been critical incidents which required responses. Thankfully, in the cases in Pacific Grove involving potentially armed suspects, which are highlighted in green, we were able to use time, distance and cover, along with de-escalation techniques, to convince the three suspects to peacefully surrender. Our equipment was available and ready to be deployed if the circumstances changed to protect the safety of the public and our officers on scene. On a routine, frequent basis, the police department is faced with situations that can potentially be resolved with less lethal tactics as a result of having the appropriate training and resources available, such as welfare checks, warrant service on cooperative individuals subject to arrest, high-risk car stops and barricaded subjects, to name a few. Many of the tools the police department utilizes to address critical incidents and high-risk criminal behavior at the local level have become industry standards among law enforcement agencies across the country. Without these tools and current technology, the police department would have to completely rethink operation and tactics to safely resolve situations and protect the public and police personnel. The equipment owned by the police department is intended for the use to save civilian lives, protect law enforcement personnel, reduce risk for the city, enhance public safety. Secondarily, the equipment also creates cover, distance and time to slow decision-making processes. Doing so allows the responding officers, when safe to do so, the ability to pause, review and evaluate the totality of the circumstances, resulting in increased safety and reduced risk for everyone involved. My final slide, please. Tonight, staff is seeking council approval of the draft policy 706 and draft ordinance 1145, so we can continue to use our resources and keep our current policies and procedures in place. Staff will hold a public meeting and return to council annually for approval. And the last slide is, we will be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Do we have, thank you. Do we have any public comment?
Nobody virtual, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council, council comments, council member Emilio.
Thank you. I'm in support of this policy, this recommendation. It's important that our Pacific Grove Police Department does a fantastic job and they're here to de-escalate situations. They work with SRU. The, the key to this is officer safety and community safety. I think that's very important. I am in support of this recommendation.
Well, I'll add that I thank, I thank the chief and commander for bringing this forward. It's a requirement of state law reporting, but it serves good purposes to allow the public to know what the police department has in the tools. And, you know, in some respects, it's unfortunate that more lethal equipment is absolutely needed, but you also have non-lethal equipment at your disposal. It's just a sign of the times. Pacific Grove, we're not immune to society at large. So I thank you very much for being up to date and having all the equipment our police force need to do their job well and safely for themselves, as well as the community. Council member Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll echo that. I, I thank you for bringing this forward, being in compliance, being early and for all the great service that you do for our community. I look forward to hearing any updates each year as you add to the inventory and I'm ready to make a motion when you want, Mayor.
Okay, Mayor Protem McAdams.
I was going to make a motion, so we'll just.
Go ahead. Please.
Okay, well, thank you so much for your service and thank you for this thorough agenda report. I was very impressed with the report and I would like to make a motion that we introduce and hold a first reading of an ordinance to, one, adopt an ordinance adding Pacific Grove Municipal Code Section 11.45 Military Equipment; two, approve draft Police Department Policy 706 titled Military Equipment; and three, direct that publication of the ordinance will be satisfied by publication of a summary approved by the city attorney.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously 7-0.
Thank you all. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. All right, well, now move. Thank you. All right, well, uh, now move on to eleven B, right, the uh current fiscal year budget modifications. Ms. Hannah.
Good evening, honorable mayor, um, council members and members of the public. This evening, I have the first reading of an ordinance to amend the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget to reflect um updates to estimates. The information tonight focuses on, on the mid-year for this fiscal year and includes a consideration of a draft ordinance to adjust the budget based on updated projections. Attentive schedule is listed below with the budget workshop and the long term forecast and the local water business uh plant, local water project business plan anticipated to presented at the May fourth council meeting. To assist with budgetary planning, the city chose to delay the fiscal forecast until after the results of the um April twelve um tax measure. And so uh we will be looking at that, at that same meeting as well, followed by the capital improvement plan, the appropriation limit, and then both readings of the ordinance to adopt the twenty-two, twenty-three budget in June. Majority of this presentation will focus on the general fund with a brief overview of information on other funds at the end of the presentation. A detailed worksheet within your agenda packet provides information on the differences between the amended budget and the proposed updates. In addition, fund balance information for the impacted funds are included within the ordinance. The city adopted the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget with conservative optimism. Most revenues were adopted to, anticipated to be recovered by eighty percent or more of their pre-pandemic levels. At the close of the first half of the fiscal year, uh, several of our key revenues have exceeded their preliminary projections, while others are proposed to be adjusted based on higher year end performance that was seen in the prior fiscal year. Additional expenditures that you'll see within the general fund include increased cost for, for legal services, specialized HR related items and a transfer to internal service funds. There is also a proposal for an additional quarter of a quarter of percent um information technology support specialist. This will create a three quarter time position. The fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two impact would be covered by salary savings from vacancies within the information technology department. However, the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three impact is estimated to be up to twenty-nine thousand dollars annually. And that could vary based on whether the individual uh elects what, what healthcare plan they elect. And part of the reason is the information technology department has tried to recruit for the vacant position and they haven't had much luck. And there are um a lot of challenges, including public facing initiatives that uh the city could benefit by adding this quarter position and increasing the, the staffing in the IT department. This is just a quick overview of the general fund. Beginning fund balance has been updated to include the final year min, end amounts. The city is anticipating a one point two nine million dollars in additional revenues with one point five four attributed to tax categories. There are net reductions in other major categories, which will go into detail of about two hundred and forty-nine thousand, which are offsetting that amount. You'll see the net increase in operating expenditures is approximately two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. And we'll also go over details of those amounts, as well as some of the transfers out, which include a one hundred thousand dollar accounting um item related to handling of the um transfer of, of monies to the local water project. And also some updates to the balances within some of the internal service funds. This brings us to a positive net difference of about five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. But one thing to note that in this fiscal year, the budget has been supplemented with approximately one point, one point eight million dollars in funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, as well as about one hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars from a library bequest. So how that relates to our estimated ending general fund balance, we're going to come in with a, a ten million dollar fund balance. And if we look at our reserve calculation, it's close to nine point three million dollars. So this places us approximately seven hundred and forty-one thousand dollars um above our target level. Just as a quick overview, um, we are projecting twenty-eight point five million dollars in revenues with close to seventy-nine percent from taxes. But again, seven percent of the revenues in this budget are one-time revenues from the ARPA and the library bequest. Uh, to give you more of a detailed um overview, a couple of things to note, we'll be going into some slides for the property tax, TOT tax and sales and use tax, which are considered our core revenues in, in a chart coming up. But in general, uh, TOT tax is, is significantly performing better than anticipated. We're looking at um close to a million dollars better. And just looking at the last uh, the last month's numbers that we just received, it actually could possibly exceed that number depending on what's going on in the economy. Because now we're seeing um inflationary, inflation rising and will some people contract spending because of that, or will it just be that the higher prices lead to higher sales tax because we're seeing increases in sales tax as well. The franchise and utility tax is estimated to increase by a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. However, that is most mostly related to performance that we had seen in the last year. So if you look at the prior year revenues, you'll see that they are closer to this year. We had seen strong performance in this tax category as well. And if you look at other taxes, again, um, over probably four to five years, we've averaged about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. But due to the rising uh housing market, it, it pretty much close to doubled last year and it looks like it's on track to do the same for this year. One thing in license permits and impact fees, if you look at um the difference from the budget, it isn't, there isn't that much change. However, if you look at it compared to the prior year, there is um probably about three to four hundred thousand dollars higher than um than that prior year. And this is primarily due to anticipated revenues um that may come in from the hotel project, the PG Hotel Project. And just as a side note, that while we may receive these in May or June, some of the expenses will not be seen until the prior year. That will be collecting those funds um in advance. Uh, other changes and include charges for services. Uh, we are seeing um we're seeing uh for some declines i- in the recreation revenues initially, and that was because of COVID nineteen at the beginning of the year. Um, as well as some of the other categories, but still it is very strong as compared to the prior year. fines and forfeitures, um, there were some significant um claims over the last three or um code enforcement items in the last three years. But this is returning more towards consistent levels with other years. And other revenues, we did have a refund from the fire service contract as well as another one-time revenue in relation to a franchise agreement. Just look at prop, looking at property taxes, you'll see the steady incline to um what we're projecting is eight point five million. Uh, the largest uh increase took place between nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one. Sales and use tax, um, we're getting to um one of our, our high points. And it's estimated to increase at six point one percent. However, that is compared to COVID nineteen levels, but still higher and um our last receipts were still trending up. TOT, um, it looks like we're getting back on track with our, our TOT revenues, a significant increase over nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one. However, still have not reached their eighteen, nineteen levels, but it is still, um, revenues are still coming in very strong. General fund expenditures, we're estimating twenty-eight million. Um, you can see that as the largest portion is attributed to salaries per his contributions and pension bonds. And still a significant amount is for services, supplies and other items. Just looking at some of the, the differences, the departments that are most impacted are the city manager and city attorney departments. The city attorney primarily due to increased um litigation and specialized litigation costs. And the city manager um due to recruitments, two recruitments uh for the community development director, that's included in that amount as well as some unique um human resources consultants and one is a carryover from a legal contract uh with assist, a previous assistant city attorney where she's working on a personnel manual with staff. Uh, additional uh changes again is the transfer with one hundred thousand dollars representing an amount that's for the local water project. It's just accounting a change. It does have, it doesn't have any net impact to the general fund because the general fund will now be receiving and offsetting a hundred thousand. And the remaining amount is um bringing the internal service funds back into, into balance. We've been drawing them down due to COVID nineteen and we've had some significant cost in that, in them, including an upcoming litigation, which we've added about eighty thousand dollars to the liability fund to meet our reserve requirements. So other funds, uh, within the details, there's changes in budgetary estimates for the community development. Block grant funds, there have been some reductions, um, as you may recall. Our uh, our housing manager had mentioned that we first needed to spend some funds before we could get receipt of others. And that's the change that, that that amount reflects. The hospitality and improvement district includes some modifications due to the increased um uh use of the transit occupancy tax and, and visitors and the project carry forwards adjustments includes some cha, it's includes some changes in the sewer fund, the local streets and roads, as well as the strong dispersment fund. The supplemental law enforcement services fund includes some additional funding for an E citation system as well as um some carryovers related to their records management system. The capital improvement fund includes a public works fire project, which is estimated to be close to a million dollars net of, of some of the projects that are anticipated to be carried forward into the next fiscal year. There is also an increase to the library building and equipment fund revenues and expenditures related to the electric powered bookmobile that was previously brought forward by our library director. And the administrative adjustment for an accounting, a treatment of ARPA funds, we were still waiting for final guidance on that. There is no net impact. It's just how we are handling the transfer of the monies or the placement of the monies within the general fund or to the areas allocated. Just on a side note, adjustments to the local water project um budget may be pending um presentation of the business plan. And with that, I conclude my presentation.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
Nothing virtual, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council, council discussion. I'm gonna start off just with a question um about the timing of the ARPA funds, the one point eight million. This, what's the timing for the first and the second installments, right? It was in, in two installments, right? And the one that's included in this fiscal year, is it is it this coming June thirtieth?
Thank you, Mayor. It has been, we have already received this year's funds. It was received in early July for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. We are anticipating the twenty-two, twenty-three funds to be provided to us at a similar time.
Okay, so we have one, just to state the obvious then, we have another one point eight million in ARPA funds coming in the next fiscal year in July, as you said, okay?
That is correct.
Uh, thank you. Any other council, council member Smith?
Thank you, Your Honor. Sorry, I haven't talked in a while. I had to get my voice going here. Um, so uh let me try to understand this. So the fund balance is higher than anticipated?
That is correct.
Okay, and so uh are, are we, is that because of the ARPA money in, in, in or other factors in your, in your mind?
Uh, council member Smith through the mayor, I guess it could be looked at one of two ways. If we did not have the ARPA money, we would probably be close to a, a negative one point four. So the ARPA money does supplement it. Um, based on our initial reporting for ARPA, we were going to use a piece of it to supplement our monies. So we, the additional five hundred and eighty thousand, um, you, if we are going to designate it to cover that to cover what we thought would be the shortfall, then it would be five hundred and eighty thousand dollars additional for the city to spend. Either way, it could be a considered above the reserve level or not. We can still change priorities on the funding at this point, but there is, if you want to say, what is it, I'm sorry, if you want to say what is above the reserve level available for spending, we could say there's seven hundred and forty thousand at least right now.
Okay, all right, um. Oh, well, I'm, I'm generally pleased that the fund balance is higher than anticipated. Although it's, it's a little complicated with the ARPA funds, although we're gonna get them again next year, so that's a good thing as well, so. I guess we hope that as we come out of the pandemic that we, things will tick up, obviously property taxes and then our sales tax hopefully as well, and we'll kind of even it all out uh in the next two fiscal years, something like that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Council member Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and thank you, um, Tori Hannah for this presentation. Appreciate it. And I just had a, this is a minor question about the technology position, the, the point five zero originally, there was no candidates, uh, so it was increased to point seven five. Is that correct?
We, uh, council member Amelia through the mayor, yes, we are requesting it to be um increased to point seven five. We did receive a, a couple of, of candidates. We did find one viable candidate, but they did not want to accept a halftime position. So when they learned it was halftime, they wanted to, they, they chose, they selected another employer.
Thank you, uh, I'm um I would look at the future of making it just a one point oh. Uh, I think you, this is my opinion that uh you would probably get more candidates uh at the one point oh position. And it's only point two five considering our fund balance.
Council member Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Hannah, this, uh, for this update. Um, I guess my question is, uh, what, what are some of our options um to the city manager for the excess? Um, is this, is the staff, do they, do you have some recommendations for it? When will we, I know maybe not tonight. That's not something we're ready to talk about, but will that be coming back to us?
Council member Tomlinson through the mayor, are, are you speaking just in general of the, in excess of the reserve limit, or are you speaking on a different topic?
Uh, the excess of the reserve limit.
So what we'd like to do, this is a mid-year adjustment. Uh, we'd like to, you're, you're on the heels of next year's budget. We'd like the major policy decisions to come in, in uh the next few meetings. We have a budget workshop. And we think that would be the appropriate time for that discussion. Tonight, this is just kind of a minor surgical talk, if you will, to address some increases and decreases that we've, we've seen, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, that, that's what I thought I heard the plan to be, but I just wanted to get some clarity and um the, the schedule laid out, May, 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 but the dates weren't there. This, there will be a special meeting, I, I, I'm understanding. So do we want to put the dates in there so the public knows?
Sure, and I have my advanced agendas with me and we have plans out. And if I could just for a moment, on the May um on the May fourth city council meeting, you are scheduled to hear, uh, you're, you're scheduled to have a budget workshop uh, as well as a five-year uh forecast presentation. We're also going to provide you with a recap of the CIP program so you can know what you accomplished. And that, we do that so that you can then go into June. Uh, you've got two meetings in June to actually establish the budget. So this is your primer, if you will. Uh, where you can ask your questions, have your discussion. You can help us uh understand what your priorities are so we can have them reflected in the spending plan. I would like to also point out that we will have I'd like to also point out that we will have some results from an ARPA survey that's going to be launched next week. We expect to get results real time, if you will, so it won't be a thing where we have to wait until the very end of the survey to hear how the community wants you to spend potentially that funding. Thank you.
Okay, and what's on May 11?
May 11? The major item on May 11 is your CIP program. There are, of course, a number of other items, but that's the major topic for that evening.
Okay.
The proposed, excuse me, the proposed CIP program for the next fiscal year.
For the next fiscal year, and then there's more finance discussion on the 18th as well?
The major item on the 18th at this point. Well, there there aren't any, any finance related items on the 18th. However, one thing we've left room for, and sorry, Mayor, to have this discussion. One thing we've left room for on the 18th is an anticipation of perhaps some carryover from the other items. Not to say that there aren't some media items on there already, there's a DEI plan that scheduled the results of the 412 election. The hidden bid programs are on there, a number of other things, but nothing specifically finance related.
Okay, thank you for indulging me on that. I guess my point that I'm trying to make is that there's going to be time to get input from the public. I know the recreation board has a lot of input they've been working on to have ready and teed up to give to us. And and so for those who are participating and listening, I think sending in how you would like the CIV projects to go forward for next year with this excess funds, we'd want to hear about it now, skate parks and all. So, yes.
Sorry, Councilmember Tom, sorry. We did already, of course, poll not only the council, all the boards and commissions and staff. So we did get, you know, a good sampling from everybody at this point as well.
Okay, great, thank you, and thank you, Tori, for this great report, so we know where we're, our starting point is at. Thanks.
Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Your Honor. Quick question, Tori, you mentioned to transfer out to the local water project of $100,000. Is that in addition to the $600,000 interfund loan that's already been made to the local water project?
Member Coletti through the mayor, that is an additional $100,000. What happened at the beginning of the fiscal year is that we booked $100,000 as direct revenues to the local water project. Based on the budget adoption. Then we had found the more proper way to do it was to do it as a transfer in. So there was another transfer in, so $200,000 of of money from water entitlement sales is being transferred, is being received now in the general fund and transferred to the local water project with 100,000 of it being more of a correction from how it was originally adopted at. So, yes.
It's not a loan then, it represents perhaps revenue generated through entitlement sales, is that right?
Yes, council had approved transferring water entitlement sales to help supplement the local water project this year.
Okay, so it's not, doesn't represent a loan, it actually just represents a transfer of revenue from a promissory note?
No, not from a promissory note, revenue like, for instance. We are anticipating receiving $200,000 total in local water project, I'm sorry, in water entitlement sales this year. And rather than the general fund retaining that, it is sending it to the local water project fund. So the general fund in essence won't have any local water project, I'm sorry, wat, water entitlement revenues coming in. It will come in in there, but it would be moved to the local water project.
Great, so basically all entitlement sales are being directed towards the local water project fund to help minimize the the loss.
That is correct.
Okay, I think that's great. I do want to point out or just kind of affirm that the core revenue, as you mentioned, the three core revenues that we have. Property tax, TOT, and sales tax are remarkably strong. I think we're, we are in pretty good shape and it's also, I I note that the commercial TOT. That's the TOT generated by hotels, non-residential TOT, to say, STRs, is higher than ever. It's the highest for this, for this financial fiscal years estimated to be the highest ever, so that's great. And also note that the sales tax has been remarkably flat even during COVID, so that's also, that's also a good, strong indicator that our fiscal impacts aren't as bad as one would have thought. Regarding the ARPA survey, I believe council directed staff to send out a postcard to residents alerting them to the survey. Have those postcards been sent?
Councilmember Coletti through the mayor, I'll defer to the city manager.
Sure.
Councilmember Coletti through the mayor, no, the survey is being launched next week.
Okay, are we, are we gonna, are the residents going to receive a postcard?
That is part of the plan.
Okay, when will those postcards go out?
The effort will be initiated next week, so, you know, a few days after that, I don't have the exact time that they will actually land in the mailboxes, but we're starting the effort next week.
Okay, so within the next week to two or two, we should have postcards within residents' mailboxes. That's all I have.
You have a motion? Mayor Protim McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Hannah, for this. I just would like to put on record that I am delighted that we are above our policy reserves. That's hasn't been in some time, so I will be cautiously optimistic and I'm happy to make a motion.
Please.
I move, we hold a first reading of an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 202122 budget and authorize publication of a summary of the measure as approved by city attorney.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0 unanimously. And now we'll move on to item 11C, appeal of architectural permit, use permit and CDP for a house remodel and additions at 711 Ocean View Boulevard. And let's start off, so this is a quasi judicial hearing. And so we'll start off with staff speaking and then see, I think the order would be the project developer, 10 minutes, is that sufficient? We didn't orchestrate this, this 10 minutes. And then the appellant. Yeah, that's, that's, that's great, but 10 minutes total, is that sufficient for you? Okay. Okay, fine, let's make it 15 for sure, and then you've got your leeway already built in and reserve any time for appeal, I mean the rebuttal and let's do 15 minutes, okay, and let's see if that works, and then the appellant. 10 minutes sufficient, Mr. Chiani? Is Mr. Chiani with us? It's going to be a short hearing if he's not. Give us a moment, please. So we're waiting for confirmation from the appellant that 10 minutes is sufficient?
Thank you, I just got unmuted. I had my hand raised the whole time, sorry for the delay. Yeah, I'll need three minutes with some time to rebut.
Okay, that that sounds good, and so I'll start off with the, with the ex parte question. As any member of council need to disclose any ex parte communication? Councilmember Emilio.
Yes, for Jeanne Byrne in passing, let's talk about the the project, that was the extent of it.
Okay. All right, additional information about the project that we're not going to hear tonight or in the, in the packet? That we should be aware of, no? Okay. With that, we'll start off with Mr. Sador, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Peek and council members. This project is located at 711 Ocean View Boulevard in the R3 PGB multiple family residential zoning district and the coastal zone. The applicant proposes to remodel an existing single-family residence, including a first floor addition, second floor addition, roof decks, a new single-car garage, and new exterior finishes, including doors, windows, roofs, siding, and trim. Project requires an architectural permit, use permit, and coastal development permit being processed jointly as APUP CDP 210294. Coastal development permit is needed because the site is located within the coastal zone and given the extent of the improvements, does not qualify for the standard residential exemption in municipal code section 239040A. The architectural review board considered the project at a hearing on October 12th and voted unanimously to recommend approval to the planning commission. Planning commission then considered the project on November 4th and again voted unanimously to approve the project. On November 15th, the appellant submitted a timely appeal of the planning commission's decision to approve the coastal development permit, contending that the approval failed to comply with Pacific Grove Municipal Code Sections 2390130 and 2390140, and specifically that the applicant needed to submit the coastal hazards report demonstrating conformance of the project with applicable land use plan policies and implementation plan regulations. Subsequent to the appeal, the applicant submitted a coastal hazards assessment to the city which concluded that the proposed development would not be vulnerable to existing coastal and tsunami hazards over the project life expectancy of at least 75 years with respect to escalating coastal hazards caused by sea level rise. The report also concluded that based on the analysis, project would not require design changes to mitigate risk. Project is categorically exempt per sequel guidelines section 15301, existing facilities. And that concludes staff's presentation and I'm available for questions. Also, the project architect is available to respond to questions as well, along with the preparer of the coastal hazards report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burns, you're next.
Jeanne Byrne, architect for the project. Mr. Sador has given a summary description, summary description of the project, so I won't repeat all the architectural and site planning descriptions. The project was unanimously approved, as he mentioned, at architectural review and also at planning commission. Planning commission included the design and the use permit. And a sort of a short explanation on the use permit. It permitted 54.46 building coverage versus 50%, which is the normal allowable. And the reason for the overage was to provide a full-size garage to replace the substandard carport. So the real item we're talking about is the appeal of the, and regarding the hazard report. The hazard report was prepared by EMC planning consultants and clearly indicates that the project property is not vulnerable to the coastal hazards. The project is in conformance with the city LUP and IP. The hazard report's only condition recommended that a perimeter foundation be used for the project. And this is standard construction, it will be part of the construction documents when we submit. The reason for the appeal letter, which was received April 4th, kind of the 10th hour as usual, had information that did accordingly did not apply or was inaccurate. Dr. David Revelle, who wrote the report, is here via Zoom to address the April 4th letter for you. And I do want to reserve time at the end. So, Dr. Revelle?
Good morning, or good, good evening, Mayor Peek and councilors. I'm David Revelle, I'm a coastal geomorphologist with Integral Consulting under the subcontract with EMC planning to prepare this coastal hazards report. I just wanted to summarize the report briefly. And then just highlight one piece in the appeal that I dug back into and re-reviewed and, you know, found consistent with the findings of our report. So the base elevation of the property in question is about 35 feet above mean lower low water or NAVD 88. The geology, it's on a granite bedrock, as the rest of Pacific Grove is with very shallow marine terrace deposits. FEMA maps a 100-year or 1% annual chance storm event at only 16 feet in elevation. So that means that even with the seven-foot elevation increase of the 16-foot, we're still not at the base elevation of about 35. In the appeal, there's very, been very little historic erosion or shoreline change because it is granite. And so the other piece I wanted to point out was that in the appeal, there was a pretty cool, pretty pretty cool picture, my perspective of waves smashing into the seawall and then the wind blowing the water from the wave uprush into the property in question. These are more of a nuisance and, you know, they will have to clean their windows more frequently as sea level rises. This doesn't propose any direct or, or does not impact the property in any substantial way, even with seven feet of sea level rise. Based on all of the existing information that we were able to review and modeling that was also done by others as part of the shoreline master planning or shoreline management planning effort. I do want to share my screen briefly and just call out one figure from that report, which Mr. Chiani had called out in his appeal. If you bear with me, will I try and get that up here? Excuse me, here we go. So hopefully everybody can see my screen here. Maybe a nod or a thumbs up lets me know.
Yes.
Not sure, okay, I'm going to go with it, but this is from the Moffett Nickel 2018 report that was completed looking at wave run-up along the city shoreline. And the chat, and so the property in question is located about mid-block here. And so if I zoom in here, and I apologize, it's not my data or or report. But if I zoom in here. One can see that even the middle of this, in the most eroded areas with up to 2100 high emission sea level rise scenarios, the road is the road is not even impacted with any kind of wave run-up. That does not in, so I want to make a distinction between between what you see in the appeal, which is wave splash. When you have onshore winds pushing wave run-up or hits a wall and runs vertically at the structure and blow into the property versus actually wave overtopping the seawall and Ocean View Boulevard and impacting a structure with velocity. So based on both the our analysis and the analysis completed by Moffett Nickel, this property is not at risk even with up to seven feet of sea level rise or 6.9 feet of sea level rise. And that concludes my remarks, but I'm happy to answer any questions from council or the appellant or applicant.
Okay, now we'll move on to Mr. Chiani, and let's reserve eight minutes for project speakers.
Good evening, Mayor Peek and members of the council. The Planning Department failed to advise the applicant in June of 2021 that initial coastal hazards support was required as part of the CDP application. At the Planning Commission's November 2021 hearing, in reliance on the staff's comments that a hazard study was not required, the Planning Commission approved the CDP. I raised the issue about the requirement, which is pretty clear in the code, that a hazard support is supposed to be prepared and submitted with the application, but nevertheless, staff said no, the Planning Commission approved the project, and it was based on that that I appealed. Four months after the appeal was filed, the applicant submitted a coastal hazards valuation dated March 2nd, 2022, prepared by EMC Planning Consultants. And the EMC evaluation concluded or included the coastal hazards assessment by Integral Consulting that I now know was done by David Revel, because if you look at that, which was submitted, it did not provide a date on it. And in other words, the hazards element by Mr. Dr. Revel was not dated. It didn't say who prepared it. It wasn't signed, and it wasn't by a qualified engineer. On Monday, April 4th, was when I could first respond to the staff recommendation. So the complaint that my April, my April 4th comments were late, well, I'm sorry. This, the staff report came out on Friday. I submitted my information on Tuesday morning. Thank you. So I, what I submitted was what wasn't included in Mr. Revel, Dr. Revel's report, new technical information that's part of the shoreline management plan. And Dr. Revel's re, the illustration just now didn't show what is in that plan that's very, very important, which is the wave ru-run-up and wave overtopping that came at 701 Ocean View Boulevard and in the immediate vicinity. There's an illustration in that report that takes the entire shoreline from from Hopkins all the way around Point Pinos in 10-foot intervals and does a cut structural calculations or the engineering calculations and diagrams at 10-foot intervals and includes this. If you look at that diagram, it shows that there is a significant impact of overtopping, not just run-up, but overtopping. And yes, if you apply the wind-blown waves, which can be very high, at least gale force. My experience in in development of immediately on the waterfront, you need to super-reinforce the window systems and the door systems, the cladding materials on the buildings, the roofs, because that splash, wind-blown strat splash has a lot of force in it, and the force elements are in the shoreline management plan. And those force elements could tear a roof off, tear the cladding off, knock out the windows, which is a hazard to the public, but also to the property. So I, it's a little offensive to think that, oh, we don't have to worry about it. Well, how about the number of times the city has closed the street because of the hazard? So I guess we have a difference of opinion. I, I'm not a geomorpholovitch, but I am an architect. I've witnessed this kind of thing before. I think the city should require the applicant to prepare a coastal hazards report with calculations. The applicant didn't not re-prepare calculations. They just made a summary conclusion that it wouldn't be a problem. So I would request that you require the the calculations, you require an assumption of risk, and you direct the matter back to the Planning Commission to make CDP findings. Or alternatively, you could require the applicant to submit the report to you and continue the matter for your action. Thank you very much.
Does the applicant wish to say anything further?
Well, I believe Dr. Revel may have some comments, but I do want to absolutely tell you that the Planning Department did not at the Planning Commission meeting say that the report was not required. There was no mention of it. At the tail end, I believe Mr. Chiani said something about what I, what would be a hazard. But at the meeting, he was actually very complimentary of the project in terms of design. But at what time did the planner say that a report was not required?
Right, we'll now go out for public comment.
I see no hands raised, Mr. Just a moment. I'm sorry. Steve Lilly, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Am I muted now?
Yes.
Usually people say, can you hear me? But I was just say, ask if I'm unmuted. That's a different way of saying it. I'm Steve Lilly. I chair the Planning Commission, but I'm speaking this evening as a private citizen. As you heard, the Planning Commission unanimously approved this project back in November. And I can say I appreciate Mr. Chiani's efforts in making sure that there was an initial coastal hazard report. But obviously, there's a difference of opinion here and between Mr. Chiani, Mr. Our Dr. Revel, but I think it's time we moved on, and I would encourage you to approve this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further public comment?
Yes, sir. We have a couple more. Hands raised. Lisa Chiana, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. My concern here, because I don't know the technical aspects, but is, is the fact that the Planning Department arbitrarily failed to require a required coastal hazards report or or assessment, because there seem to be two levels. You do an assessment, and based on that, you may go on to do the report. I'm not totally clear on that. I just know that something is required as far as coastal hazards. And and it's because when you do a remodel, you, you're extending the life of the building. So now the building takes on a new 75-year life. And you want to know that the building is not going to be hazard subject to hazards in that period of time. So, I mean, that's fairly standard. This is a concern of the coastal commissions. And I just don't feel that our planning department should be cavalier about this. I think the Planning Department is not qualified to make a decision about whether, what the coastal hazards are. So I would I would just like to say the city should be following, complying with its own LCP and it, it, it sounds to me from what I've heard, but I am a little biased, that that there do need to be calculations. And and a, I'm sorry, I forget, that assumption of risk should be signed so that the city is not responsible for protecting that building if once it is finally approved. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Inga Lawrence and Dimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. This seems to be another one of those little pesky process problems that keep cropping up. And yes, I believe this is kind of the, from the initial coaster asage report, it was needed. As far as Jeannie Byrne's design, yes, it's fine. And I was at all those meetings, but the coastal hazards report, which I kind of understand is an agenda item. I can't remember exactly where now, but that Allison wants to do our CDD Director presently wants to do away with is really an important kind of requirement and step that needs to be addressed. And so I appreciate this whole process and the appeal, but it needs to, we need to have staffers who follow procedure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, their hands are raised. Mr. Mayor.
Close the hearing and council discussion. I'll, I'll start off by saying we're finished public comment. The rebuttal was already, the applicant, you spoke, then the appellant spoke, then you spoke, you had a rebuttal, you had public comment. Maybe your rebuttal should have been after public comment. Is that what you're saying? Please, if you'd like to come to the microphone.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And this is in defense of the Planning Department. The reference to doing an initial study isn't required because that whole area is zoned hazard. So in the statement that was just made that that there was missing one of the studies, that's simply incorrect, because you don't do a study to find out if it's in the hazard zone when it's already zoned it as hazard. And the city has never been responsible for any damage to any buildings, and there hasn't actually been any damage to any of those buildings along Ocean View. Thank you.
Thank you, council discussion. I'll, I'll just add that we do need, we did pass, this council passed the local coastal program. We do need to follow the regulations, and many of them are for good reason, right? We shouldn't be permitting structures to be built in a place, obviously, that will be subject to storm damage and waves. Not that that applies in this case, apparently, so, but I'm just saying theoretically, that's a good thing. This, on, it seems like that the hazards report we heard makes sense to me. Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the conversation tonight, for everyone who has prepared their remarks and brought this forward. It sounds like a lot of good work with has gone into this project. I'm happy to support it and uphold it, and I appreciate the Gianni's for the appeal. Because I believe it came from the, a place of good intention, and so we're, we're all gonna be able to move projects in the local coastal area forward in the proper way as, as has been done here and as we'll continue to do. So I can make a motion when you're ready.
Okay, Councilmember Coletti, I thought you had your hand. Councilmember Coletti, if not, then Councilmember Smith.
Councilmember Smith? Oh, all right. I thought there were a couple in front of me, but that's, oh, that's okay. I support the project, and I feel that the hazard policies were analyzed appropriately by staff and others, so I think it's a great project, and I'm supportive. And, and I, again, I, the analysis was great. I read the analysis that was done, and I thought it was, that's exactly what you do. You look at the hazard policies, and then you analyze them. So if it, that's, I saw that analysis on the applicant side. So, thank you.
Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I also agree with the recommendation, but I did, and I appreciate everybody's comments on this. I did go down for myself to the project, and I noticed there was several two-story homes, right? Identical, and this is a one-story unit that is out of the ordinary, and I, I totally agree with the project and and I appreciate the comments also, but I did go directly to the projects. Take a look at it.
I think we're ready for a motion. Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got a question for Dr. Revel. Hi, Doctor, I got a quick question for you. Do you, would you say this is kind of a question of competing inundation maps? Mr. Chiani has suggested that the shoreline management plan offers a model of inundation relative to projected sea level rise. And then there's also an inundation map contained within the EMC report. What is your feeling on how those two can be reconciled, or are there any glaring errors between them?
That's a, that's a great question. I have been modeling coastal hazards in California, and actually, the one of the screening tools that the city uses when they incorporated and certified their LCP is based on the very first coastal hazard models that I did in 2008. And though we've learned a lot about climate change, sea level rise and things since then, and so those maps that are in the LCP that sort of say, hey, as a screening level tool, this property fell within that that hazard zone. That was a very rudimentary analysis that was done for the entire state of California in five months. So there is, I run into this a lot with the scale of analysis that was done and the science that was used to do that and the sort of level of detail along the shoreline. The Moffett Nickel, so I understand why the LCP shows a lot of these properties at risk, and that's like, I didn't realize it was going to be used for that, but in some sense, it's my fault. But the science that's going on now and the resolution that that was done at is not necessarily appropriate for a site-specific decision. And the, some of the other modeling that's been done and is available is also not appropriate for site-specific decision-making. And what's really needed is that level of detail and consistency across the city. So there are dueling models and mapping efforts, and it takes a geek to kind of figure out all the nuances, but you know, I've looked at a lot of them and done a lot of them myself, and I feel pretty confident that this parcel is not. I feel pretty confident that this parcel is not at risk any more than anything else along Ocean View Boulevard in the future. And that most of Ocean View Boulevard, as I mapped in 2008, is not nearly as vulnerable as I had mapped at a statewide scale. It's now being used for parcel decision.
Okay, thank you for that. So the model used in the EMC report, the USGS Cosmos model, you feel is a better predictor of wave run-up potential?
So. There, I reviewed the Cosmos model, the FEMA model, the Moffett Nickel model, and none of them are. Of them, the Moffett Nickel model is probably the most site-specific, but they don't factor any erosion into it. So there are shortcomings in all of the models that presently exist for the shoreline of Pacific Grove.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Councilmember Smith.
I would make a motion to that we, the City Council deny the appeal. Find the project categorically exempt per sequel guidelines, section fifteen three oh one. Approve the architectural permit, use permit, and coastal development permit twenty-one dash zero two nine four, subject to the required findings and recommended conditions of approval contained in the draft resolution.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carries unanimously, seven, zero. I suggest we take a ten-minute brief recess. And since we have a timer here. Could our city clerk put ten minutes on our timer?
I think we can.
If it's too difficult, we'll just, we'll make it eight.
I think we can.
Eight twenty. We'll resume. Ms. Wyatt, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. It's great to be here. And tonight we have David Driscoll from Baird and Driscoll. And he has been with us with the Welcome Home Strategy and is helping us get through our housing element update, which we're all very excited about. And we recently had our Housing Element one oh one workshop to kick off the housing element planning. And this housing element planning is underway. So David, would you like to get started?
Sure. Nice to be with you this evening, Mayor, members of council and folks who are tuning in. I'm going to do a quick walkthrough presentation. We've talked a little bit about the housing element in previous conversations. We're going to go get a bit deeper and talk specifically about the regional housing needs allocation and where that is in the process, what it means for Pacific Grove and next steps as we launch into thousand element update. I'm going to share my screen, hopefully successfully. Should be able to see that. So key takeaways, I want to start off with. I'm going to describe some Rena numbers. So Regional Housing Needs Allocation, RHNA, people say Rena. So that's the shorthand Rena, your arena this time around and your housing element update is significantly higher than it was in the last round. The draft numbers aren't official yet, but they're getting close to being official draft numbers. I'll talk a little bit about that. There will be an opportunity to appeal the numbers. I will tell you upfront, the criteria, the state-defined criteria for appeals is pretty narrow. The consequences of not having a housing element are significant and they're becoming more so. The state just put in place an enforcement unit to proactively enforce the state housing laws through the housing element implementation process. There will be the need to rezone. We talked about the possibility that we might have to rezone previously, but it is definitely clear that there will need to be rezoning and it will likely be a pretty big lift to get that done. Talk a little bit about that. And as we talk about all this, I also want to keep in mind that we actually really do need affordable housing. We spent months in the Welcome Home Initiative, talking about the need for affordable housing, quantifying it, the different groups that need housing. And while we're going to be feeling like we've got to rise to the state law requirements, there also is is a local locally driven need for the work that we're doing. I will tell you, I also incorporated some images I pulled off the web of people in Pacific Grove to help remind us why we're doing this work. So we're creating the housing of the future for future generations, for our workforce, for people who are in our community who are going to need different housing as they grow older. So on this slide, I just want to refresh you on the regional housing needs allocation. Rena five is what was referred to in the twenty, what is it, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen process. When your element was last updated, we are now in Rena six. It's a process that's mandated by state law. Some of those state laws have become more stringent recently, so that's driving some of the increases in numbers that we're seeing. Every jurisdiction in Monterey County in the state of California must have a housing element. It's part of your general plan. And your general plan needs to be consistent with housing elements. So that's another thing we'll talk briefly about. And its intent is to help facilitate new housing development to meet your Rena. Understanding that cities don't build housing, they create the rules and policies and sometimes make investments and do other actions to help facilitate those outcomes. And the housing element is making sure that as a communities, the city of Pacific Grove is putting in place the rules and policies, procedures to support that level of housing development. So last time around, the Ambag Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments, the regional allocation from the state through a state methodology was that you would need ten thousand four hundred thirty units in the region over the eight-year planning period. That was Rena five. For Rena six, the number is thirty-three thousand two hundred seventy-four. That increase has been happening in regions around the state as this process has played out, that level of increase. So that's a three hundred percent increase about. And that number has already been finalized. It's set, there's no process for appealing that. That is the number that the region is working with. The region is, though, in a process of figuring out how to allocate that number to jurisdictions within the Ambag region. They agreed on and the Ambag Board adopted a draft methodology in January. And next week, actually, on the thirteenth, there will be a public hearing and the Ambag Board will take action to finalize that methodology, which will then set in place the draft Rena numbers. Ambag will then release what's called the Draft Rena Plan for this planning period and later this month. And that starts the actual official appeals process, public review process for the draft, but, excuse me, for the draft numbers. So. We're in process, but we're getting close to having numbers that are going to be much more official than what we've had so far. The state has reviewed the methodology that Ambag Board adopted and has said it meets state law. This table has a bunch of numbers on it. There's, the first column is the numbers from Rena five. So I gave you that number, ten thousand four hundred thirty, and of those ten thousand units, one hundred and fifteen were allocated to Pacific Grove. And that's basically for the last eight years that drove the planning and identification of sites in your previous or your existing currently adopted housing element. And you've actually produced one hundred twenty-eight units during that period. So you've gone a little bit above. But there's also Rena breaks things out by four income categories. So all you've done a really good job of meeting your Rena in the the top three, from low income to moderate income and above moderate income. Lagging on the very low income, and that's not surprising, creating very low income units is a challenging prospect. It requires typically some form of land subsidy, a number of different funding sources. These are typically units that are built by mission-driven nonprofits. There's tax credit funds and other funds that go into making those units happen. So lagging on on production there, but you can see in the Rena six, a pretty significant increase. Not just overall in terms of going to one thousand one hundred twenty-five units for your Rena, out of that thirty-three thousand for the region. But also significant increase in particular in the very low income and low income categories, as well as a bump up in the moderate and above moderate. So. Those are pretty, pretty significant numbers, higher than we had anticipated when we last talked a few months ago. We thought would be in about the four hundred range. So we're going to be figuring out how to meet those numbers, assuming, you know, at this point in the game, we typically plan based on those draft numbers, understanding that. They may change, but they may not change. And it's given us indication of what we need to start planning for. So the blue row here is the specific growth numbers. The first two columns are Rena five, Rena six, and then that percentage increase. And then we've added in this table, the actual units, that estimated number of units for the jurisdictions on this page that existed in twenty twenty-one. And then what's that increase in terms of planning for that level of units indicated in Rena six? What's the percentage increase there? So there's that percentage increase, eight hundred seventy-eight percent from Rena five, Rena six. But what maybe matters even more is what's the increase from what we have today to what we're expected to plan for? So that's a fourteen percent increase, which is actually consistent with the countywide increase that at bottom row, where the the region as a whole, or actually, this is countywide, Monterey County is expected to plan for a fourteen percent increase in the number of housing units. And you can see from the numbers, this plays out quite differently for each of the jurisdictions that are around Pacific Grove. This is not all the Monterey County jurisdictions, but a number of them that are close by. So you can see Monterey is actually needing to plan for a twenty-seven percent increase in housing units compared to what they have today. But it's actually a lower percentage increase from what Rena five was for them. So a lot of information, a lot of numbers in this page. We'll be posting this on the on the city website for people who want to delve into it. And all this is also obviously in the Ambag Rena documents. So what comes next? I mentioned there's a meeting next week of the Ambag Board. There will be a public hearing as part of that. They will take action to adopt the the methodology to be the final methodology and that will then result in the release of the draft Rena Plan. There is a forty-five day public review period. Cities can file appeals about their numbers. They can also file appeals related to other jurisdictions' numbers. Individuals can file letters of comment. Ambag Board will consider all of the formal appeals in August is the expected date for that. And with the final Rena Plan adopted in October. And all this leads to elements being done and submitted to the state for their review, final approval by December of twenty twenty-three. And we have to back up from that date in order to provide time for a review, an initial review by State HCD, the Housing Community Development Department, prior to that December date. So we're really looking to middle of next year or even spring of next year to have a draft plan. So we talked before about what's in the housing element. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail here. Obviously, a friend of mine for Pacific Grove is one of the big constraints you have, which is water. So we will be speaking to that in the housing element, talking about what the water situation is, how that affects housing development, the actions that are underway to address that as constraint. However, we still need to do a plan that plans for the level of the housing development indicated in the Rena. So that the sites inventory is a key part of that, where we identify sites where we have the zoning and other development regulations in place to support that level of housing development. We have a section that talks about housing needs. Talk a little bit about more of that, since it's Fair Housing Month, about how fair housing plays into that. And then there's a whole section that talks about our goals and policies and programs to, you know, make sure we've got this conditions in place to facilitate housing development. And part of that will be speaking to things that the city and others are doing to address the water situation. A significant new part of state law is what's called affirmatively furthering fair housing, or people will say AFFH. It's Fair Housing Month, so appropriate, we're talking about it. So that means that the housing element, which is different from the last time you did a housing element, it needs to include a fair housing assessment. It needs to have policies and programs that speak to fair housing. So this is making sure we have policies that support non-discrimination in the housing market, provide education to landlords and tenants about their rights and responsibilities, et cetera. It also plays into where new housing is located. So we need to make sure that as we look at rezoning, that we are not furthering any historic patterns of segregation or discrimination and that we're locating affordable units in places that have access to opportunity. And that we're, need to also make sure that as we do the engagement process, that we're doing inclusive engagement. And I'll just say, we're working with a lot of Bay Area jurisdictions. We've been looking to the experience that's currently playing out in Southern California. The two areas where jurisdictions are not getting certified elements and the responses from the state are focused on AFFH and on sites inventories. So those are going to be two things where we know there's going to be a lot of attention from the state reviewers. So why do we need to do this? It's state law. So cities are a creature of the state. If we do not have a certified housing element, then our general plan is considered to be inadequate. We are open to legal suits and financial penalty penalties, excuse me. And the the biggest potential outcome doesn't happen very often, but it's happened, it can happen, is the loss of permanent authority. Basically, you lose your land use and permanent authority. And then there's a number of things that potentially kick in related to streamlined review and approval, which basically means a ministerial review is a staff-level review of development applications that meet certain requirements. And like I said earlier, there is a new housing accountability unit that has been funded and put in place at the state level. So it used to be that enforcement of housing elements was more on sort of a complaint basis typically led by advocates. Now the state is saying they're going to actually monitor implementation to make sure that when people adopt their housing elements, that they actually follow up on them rather than look at them again eight years later when they have to update it again. So how do we get to eleven hundred new units? There's a number of things we're going to be looking at, and we've talked about a bunch of these in the Welcome Home Initiative. So we've got a head start. Accessory dwelling units, ADUs, that's, you know, units that are accessory to the existing primary single-family home that's on a property. You're you're seeing a number of ADU applications and the staff's been working to help people understand what they can and can't do. And that's going to be a really helpful way to meet our Rena. We are likely, well, we're going to be looking at rezoning opportunities downtown and on commercial corridors. We've talked previously about Forest Hill area. Updating the specific plan there and looking at rezoning of Forest Hill area. We've talked and we did some analysis in the Welcome Home Initiative process, looking at metal housing. So this is duplexes, triplexes, small apartment buildings, which you actually have a lot of great examples of in Pacific Grove that are mixed in sort of the older neighborhoods close to downtown. But actually, many in cases, they can't be built today under the zoning you have in place. So what can we do to facilitate those in new development? Lots, but in smaller lots, we talked about in the Welcome Home Initiative. We're going to talk a little bit about it at a future meeting or I think it's in May. So there was SB nine, which we talked about in the fall, which is now state law, which helps to facilitate in some situations, lot splits. We'll talk about that and how that could help us meet our Rena potentially. And most importantly, or maybe as importantly, key opportunity sites, which we've talked about before and we did a special session on where there are lots of properties that are owned by the city, owned by the school district, or owned by large private landowners that could be places where we could create a number of units in great locations through partnerships. So tonight, we just wanted to orient you to the Rena numbers and the work that is ahead of us. Respond to any questions you have. We are talking with some of the other jurisdictions. We are talking with some of the other jurisdictions. Our staff's been talking to launch. Collaborative platform, web platform for engagement. Let's Talk Housing, doing some collaborative workshops. We're not in this alone. All the jurisdictions are needing to update. You saw some of the numbers there. Grappling with as well. So this is a collective challenge. We're looking to how we can make sure that our engagement strategy has a strong equity focus that we're hearing from people we don't typically hear from. We want, we're going to be starting up meetings with the housing, housing element steering committee, which will be sort of a. A new iteration, a continued iteration, but with maybe some new membership on of our housing advisory group. And really gearing up for some significant, and I know will be challenging rezoning conversations this summer. So. Twenty twenty three sounds like it's a long time away. It's not. So we want to get going soon. And we're going to be back. I can't remember the date, but I know it's on my calendar. To talk with you about a number of topics listed here. Some of them, which I talked about in the previous slide. Important area of work ahead is objective design and development standards and string line review, which are already required for some forms of development. And we need to put some things in place. And we think we can do the outreach for those in conjunction with the housing element outreach. Talk about the opportunity sites and potential for a ballot item for this fall to look at voter restrictions that would. Need to be changed in order for us to do those opportunity sites, density bonus, et cetera. Wrap up and stop sharing screen. I don't know if Anastasia or Allison, you want to chime in with anything? Or we can. Take questions.
I'm good.
We'll go out for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Esther Malkin. You have the floor.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Esther Malkin from Monterey County Renters United. I'm happy to see that housing, both homeless and affordable, are on your agenda tonight. I just want to remind everybody and point out that those two. Items are directly connected to each other. If we do not. Build enough. And while we're waiting for that building to happen, if we do not address the skyrocketing rents. You are going to be complicit in more people becoming homeless. It's a simple fact. That most people don't become homeless from being homeowners. They usually become renters. And then they end up couch surfing or renting rooms, and then they become homeless. The the stigma attached to homelessness, that it's a bunch of people that are drug addicts or alcoholics and mentally ill. Was completely debunked. At the last recession. There are thousands of people in our county that have never recovered from the recession. While everybody is talking about the the economic recovery that every that Wall Street has had. While our homeless numbers have continued to rise. And that was before we even. Made the word pandemic part of our daily conversations. So I want to make sure that everybody who's listening tonight understands the direct connection. Between. Unaffordable rent. And homelessness. And until you can find a way to build as fast as rents are going up. You've got to address the skyrocketing rents simultaneously. Otherwise, you're just adding water to a leaking bucket. And we've been doing that for decades. And now it's gotten to the point of not just crisis, mega crisis. Because we now have a bunch of these more funding programs that the state and the feds had in place. That are going away that were due to the pandemic. And for the past year, there's been. A lot of resources out there to prevent what's been called the homelessness tsunami that's coming. And the only way to address it is by addressing it. Through the rent problem as well as building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jane Haynes, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to talk about some things that I'm doing on my own in connection with this. The first is that. Is a looking into a possible appeal to. Ambag for the Rena numbers. Last week, I submitted a public records request to them. For doc documents that would, one, show the source of their. The figures that they're using. And two, that would show the methodology. I want to look into that. And if I see something there, I think the city ought to know about, I will let let Anastasia know. The second thing I'm doing is I've contacted the Pacific Grove Unified School District. And. I, Dr. Porus and I communicated. Today. I'm, he has referred me to one of his board members. Who is. The person, the board, the PGUSD board has designated for housing issues. So I will be contacting that gentleman. And talking with him about it. Also today. I talked with the city's HR director. About how many city employees that we have and how many of those live outside of the city. You have seventy eight full time and part seventy eight full time employees, thirty one part time, twenty seasonal. And she guessed that probably over half of those live outside of Pacific Grove because they can't afford to live here. At the school district, they have two hundred and eighty seven. Employees. If you think about each of those employees representing a family. That's, that's a good chunk of people. So anyway, those are things I'm looking into, and I just want to say I appreciate. How Anastasia has been conducting this, the energy that she's put into it, the leadership. And I just appreciate the city looking into this. My personal goal is I'd love to see it. So that anyone who works in Pacific Grove and who wants to live in Pacific Grove. Can find an affordable place to live in Pacific Grove. So anyway. Thank you for what you're doing. And again, I just commend Anastasia for her leadership.
Thank you.
Tony Chiani.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. This is such an important issue. That Pacific Grove is facing, but all the communities in Monterey, and for that matter, California. Clearly, Pacific Grove is. An exclusive place to live. However, my children can't live here. They. My daughter lives in seaside. In a tiny little space. That costs a lot of money. My son lives in Marina. In a small space that costs a lot of money. I'm an architect. I understand. How to develop affordable units and things like that. But unless they're made affordable. It's not going to work. We need. A policy beyond the land use policy, beyond the development policy. We need a political policy. To ma- to manage. The costs of rent. I think they do this in the Bay Area and various communities. I think in Southern California. There's a few places that. The rents are controlled. It frightens me to say those words, the rent control, but. Shouldn't we be looking at that? And I would ask the consultant if that's not something. That the city can do. That the state would allow. For there to be some form of. Floor. And ceiling. For how much. Various places are are charging. I mean, if we develop more affordable units, but we don't control how much they're gonna. Cost. And we don't look at our, our. The amount of housing that we have available and don't start limiting the amount of costs. Are, where are we going to provide the? Where's the solution? Thank you.
Thank you.
No other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll bring back the council for comments. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I I need some help from staff on this one, but I think. What I'm reading here is that there are. There are one thousand one hundred and twenty five units allocated. And that would be new units, I think. Is that correct? Yes.
They can come from conversion, but yeah, mostly they're new.
Okay, so there can be a conversion of units that are. It, let's say. Unaffordable, and then they become affordable or something like that, or?
Yep, it's a. There are ways to do it. Mostly, it's going to have to be the zoning and other actions to create new units.
Thank you. I mean, I think this is a super important thing that that's going on here. With three challenges of just the geography of the city as it is now. Built with all the buildings and everything. I think that's going to be challenging. I think the property value here is going to also be a secondary thing, and and the water availability is going to be the third thing. So those three challenges. In mind. I think it's, this is going to be really difficult to create eleven hundred new units. So I mean, we're, that's probably got to be at the top of our priority list. As a council. Because of the the difficulty of it. And so I think, you know, I'm glad that we have. Ms. Wyatt and Mr. Driscoll on board to help us try to. Create strategies for that. And I think we'll be doing a lot more work on this in the in the days to come. Thank you.
Councilmember Padori.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I I would agree with what Councilmember Smith said, and I also agreed with. What Ms. Haynes was saying there, because she's spot on on a lot of items in there. And I would add that there are members of the council too who are renting. They don't necessarily have homes. So it is difficult, and housing is a difficult market right away. I. In anticipation of what we get from Ambag related to those inquiries. I wanted to ask Mr. Driscoll or Ms. Wyatt. Help me out here with respect to the numbers, because the methodology says that the arena numbers are set. When we say the arena numbers are set, are they set for the region? And basically, nobody can change that number for that region. Is that right? For the housing element six?
The the process that set the regional number has been completed, and that that number is now set. The methodology for how that number is distributed to all the jurisdictions is what's currently in process.
Got it, got it. And any particular reason, in your opinion, since. You're the expert, why is Marina at a negative number? I don't get it. I mean, City of Pacific Grove is like thousand percent increase or something. Marina, the housing element six has actually fallen. So. What is the big reason behind that? Do you happen to know?
I don't know the methodology well enough. I know Anastasia, do you have any insights on that?
I think it's based on the. Areas of. It's based on trying to reach racial and equitable. Solutions to this housing element cycle. So for jurisdictions that were. Highly. White and more well off with less poverty, those areas received higher numbers. So if you weren't in one of those jurisdictions, your numbers weren't given as much. Of a, of an increase. And this comes from the negotiations that. The state and Ambag went through. So at first, they came in with one methodology. Where we had an option where we wouldn't have had as many units. It was about six hundred and something units, eighty four, I think. And they went back to the state, and the state said, you're not addressing the affirmatively furthering fair housing. Enough. And so. Really, all of our housing policy, grant policy from the feds, from the state, is to address. Historic patterns of segregation. And this is what's really come into play in this housing element cycle, and why we're seeing these numbers.
I'll just, just to be clear, the the drop is the comparison of Rena five to Rena six. It's actually still calling for a nine percent growth. In housing in Marina over the eight year period. Compared to what number of units they have today.
I think I understand it, but we can talk offline too. And then from an appeal process, what what is appealable? The Rena numbers are set, so you can necessarily appeal it for the region. But is everything else appealable? Is that, is that?
The the short answer is you can appeal that the methodology was applied incorrectly. And you can appeal that the data that was used in that methodology was incorrect. Appeals, and you know, you can still try it, but just based on sort of what's what's passed and what hasn't in other regions, appeals that are says. We don't have capacity, we're built out. Those those appeals are not successful. Because they're not based in state law in terms of what you can appeal.
Okay. Yeah, I was just trying to understand what the process is. But I mean, overall, I mean, this is a crisis, mega crisis, however you want to call it. Seems like California, there's a crisis and every everything. So so we need to look in. I'm really glad, Anastasia, you're on top of things, and I look, continue to. Partnering with you to see how we can take this forward. Thank you.
Mayor Tim McAdams is Pacific Grove's director on the Ambag Board. Perhaps you'd speak to some of these issues.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Wyatt, for your help and support during this. Process. And also, you know, Ambag is a tri-county entity. So we also were. We have board members who represent Santa Cruz County as well as San Benito County. So. For me, so yes, there were numbers prior that where Pacific Grove did have less. What Anastasia said, about six hundred and eighty four units. And something that I did hear. Which, you know, for me is true, especially from our, you know, we are a very affluent community, is you do hear that. Oh, well, those people should go over there, and over there, meaning. Fort Ord and Salinas, you know, not in our community. But, you know, if you think about affordable housing and the qualifications income wise. You know, these are members of our community who are working at Trader Joe's, who work at our schools, who are working in our hotels that do qualify. In the affordable housing guidelines that range from very low to moderate. So. Yes, this is a large number, one thousand one hundred and twenty five. And. This council will need political will and councils to come. I don't know if you remember when we had three units of affordable units come. And, you know, you thought you would think the city was on fire. And we sort of had that same reaction to a proposed. Project Home Key. You know, again, the city's on fire. So when we talk about eleven hundred units. And people are melting down over three or forty nine potential units, we have to really stand up. And represent. Future residents who do already work here and spend forty to eighty hours a week. In our community that deserve to live here. This is also seniors. This is people with disabilities. These are families. And, you know, for me, it was lovely being involved in this process. And. You know, again, I just, I'm really going to speak to having that political will when projects come to the dais. Because we can't hide from these numbers, and we will be held accountable. So. You know, I'm looking forward to continuing this dialogue. And Anastasia, I am so grateful that you are with the City of Pacific Grove. So thank you very much for your work.
Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Anastasia, and. Mr. Driscoll for the presentation on this. It is a problematic. It is a problematic, it is one of our goals of affordable housing. And but I did want to ask Mr. Driscoll, do you, a couple of questions. Do you represent other regions in the state of California?
A lot of our work is based in the Bay Area, so we're supporting jurisdictions and mostly in San Mateo County and Santa Clara County.
Okay, and obviously, we have not only City of Pacific Grove, but the other cities have a water problem, but do you find something in the other areas you're working at that there's like a magic, I hate to call it a bullet, magic number, magic thing that could bring in water? I don't, water seems to be the keys of the kingdom right now. I was just wondering if you had any examples.
Of solving your water problem? That's not my area of expertise. But
Other areas of
Yeah, I mean, there's a number of
Doing there.
A number of jurisdictions are facing constraints of different types that they need to speak to in their elements as they do their constraints analysis. So the constraints analysis is both of governmental constraints. A part of that is looking at how do our development regulations compare to other jurisdictions and that might be impeding the development of housing and as well as non-governmental constraints. So it could be water, it could be sewer capacity, it could be elevated construction costs. There's a number of things that we'll look at in the constraints analysis. And to the extent that the city has any you know, sway, whether or not they have authority or not, but some sort of way in which they can affect an outcome. We will need to speak to that as to what the city is doing to help address the water constraint. So that, you know, and there's other processes that are underway that, you know, I don't know the real details of them all, but I know there's processes underway to address that and we'll need to speak to that in the element. And we'll need to plan for the development of those units, whether or not we anticipate that the water is going to be available within the eight year period. We're going to need to proceed based on assumption that we're going to address the water issue and put in place the zoning and other policies to support the development of that housing.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Clay.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to react, I guess, a little bit to the point that was made about the Home Key Project. I attended the Home Key Workshop that the city put on. The mayor was there, so was Councilmember Pedori. This was back in March. And it was well attended by the public, to be sure. And I didn't see anyone melting down, quite the opposite. I saw people engaged and had some real concerns about the process. Including putting the original Home Key application on a consent agenda. So I I think people in the in the city are are listening, are paying attention. And they're looking to us to provide a credible process going forward on that. And I think that's perfectly acceptable. I do have some questions about the Reno methodology that is the current draft. Didn't some of, so there are, just for everyone's information, there are four income categories, as I understand it. Mr. Driscoll, very low, low, moderate, and above moderate.
Yep.
There was a shift in the in the adopted draft Reno methodology that shifted some of the moderate to very low and then moderate to low. Is that your understanding of what Ambag did?
That's my understanding in terms of the increase in those categories for Pacific Grove. Yeah.
So Ambag decided that there was going to be this shift towards towards lower income essentially, which is what the city is having the most difficult difficulty accommodating. And there was also the draft Reno methodology directed growth into the incorporated jurisdictions such as Pacific Grove on the peninsula. Is that correct? Now, that decision to direct both the income categories and the actual locations, the into different jurisdictions for the growth. That's probably not appealable. Is that correct, based on your?
Once the, and
Sorry, if I may, just, that was definitely came down from the state and it was through, it wasn't just Ambag, it was Ambag negotiating with the state on our numbers. And it was again, based on the racially concentrated areas of affluence, and that's where the income shift came in.
So both of those shifts, the shift in growth directed towards the peninsula and then the shifts in the income categories were state-directed?
They were, and the state is really focused right now. If you're looking at tax credit allocation maps, which determine what are the most areas of opportunity, these are areas of opportunity maps throughout the state. They focus and give higher points when you're creating a housing development to areas that are in high areas of opportunity. So it's based on large state methodology.
I'll just, so the state defines the factors that the methodology needs to incorporate. Ambag develops the methodology. What's just coming to a conclusion is the state reviewed that draft methodology, found it to be in compliance with the state requirements. The Ambag Act Board meeting next week will potentially adopt it now that it's been approved by the state.
Okay, I'm just trying to fill in some of the blanks on why our numbers did increase and in both of those topic areas. I do agree with Esther Malkin. If you're producing homelessness at a greater rate, then you can possibly hope to build new housing for. You really are still in the same problem area, so. Don't know what the answer is, obviously, but I think that is something that needs to be part of the discussion and I'm sure it will be. Thank you.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for all the comments. I just have a question that I well, I'll start back up and say that I absolutely appreciate everyone in the region and in this room and everyone who's been working on this subject. I look forward to the conversations that go forward and that we're going to be having. I won't call myself an expert, but I I'm committed to, you know, follow the process and learn and be supportive of it. I have a question. In the past, I don't know if it was anecdotal, but I I heard things like, yeah, we have these Reno numbers, but we don't ever achieve them and there's no penalty or fine or consequence and and, you know, my understanding is the state is very much getting involved and cracking down on that up and down the state. So can someone speak to that? As far as where we're at, what are the penalties if we don't come up with the housing element? And how quickly will they be put upon us?
I can start and Anastasia, if you want to jump in. So right now, actually, you're subject to and we'll talk about it the next, I guess it's the 20th, April 20th, we'll be back to talk to you more. What's called SB 35, Senate Bill 35. Because you did not achieve your lower income, very low income numbers in your current Reno developments that meet certain requirements related to levels of affordability can come in and make an application for approval that then needs to be subject to a ministerial streamlined review. And you can only use objective standards to review and approve of that, which means not a discretionary view with the Planning Commission. Not a public hearing, sort of discretionary hearing with the city council. You have to have very clear rules by which the developer knows if they check those boxes, they will get approval. So that actually exists today, that and that's a bill that was passed since the last housing element was updated as a way to help ensure that the Reno numbers are being met. And there are very few jurisdictions around the state of California that have met the Reno numbers, which is a big reason why the state is looking at different ways to help people get there. So the and other other things, it's harder to get funding, financing. And I think probably the biggest one is being open to legal challenges, which then calls into question your general plan and your land use authority.
Okay, and are there financial penalties? That specific, I I'm just imagining some kind of, you know, at the end of the year, you didn't meet by this amount, so you're going to have to pay X amount. Is there that kind of penalty?
Only through lawsuits today. I mean, it's not, and lack of access to funding.
Okay. So it sounds like lawsuits and loss of control over how projects can come to your area, your, to Pacific Grove.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. I was just curious about the the kind of the the fines and the consequences side of things. And and is it true that, you know, in the past there, these threats were there, but they just weren't followed up on? And now the it's going to be different? Is, can someone speak to that of how it's been transpiring differently and the state's taking it more serious?
In the past, typically, you might be subject to a legal action by a housing advocacy group, a legal aid group that says you're not meeting state law requirements, and then the courts would determine and determine the remedy for that. But now, yeah, you have a more proactive approach from the state funding of an enforcement unit that's going to monitor things between. Right now, really, the state looks at things at every housing element update. How did you do and what are you doing in your new housing element to make sure you do better? But now they're going to be looking at it more on an annual basis with new reporting requirements and potential consequences.
Okay, thank you. And then I have a second question of, you know, putting forward a housing element, my understanding is that's a plan in order to put all the building blocks in place so that these numbers can be achieved, but we're not required to actually build them. Builders will have to come and and apply to build to build the units. So the goal before us, and I don't, I know we're not doing it tonight, is to come up with removing enough red tape and putting enough support in place so that that it's achievable. Is that correct when you call it what you call a housing element?
Correct. Making sure we have zoning in place and sites identified where that housing could go at sufficient densities to support the level of affordability identified. So that that's where the rezoning is going to be required to create those sites. And I would say there's there's a number of new requirements for what will qualify as a site for housing. In the past, there were sites identified that really housing couldn't be developed. And we have some sites that maybe have been in two or three housing elements. And nothing's gotten built on them. We will not be able to use those sites in the new element. And we'll have to have sufficient evidence that the zoning we have in place is enough to trigger market redevelopment, because mostly we'll be having non vacant sites on on the list. So.
Okay, and then last question is, based on what you've looked at so far in Pacific Grove, do you think these numbers are achievable?
Everything's achievable. It depends what you're up for. I mean, you know, we're not going to build 20-story towers, but you know, there will be the need for upzoning from what you've had in the past. You have, you know, you've created 8,000 units over time. And this will be another round of housing development to meet the need. So yeah, that's where we'll be looking at potential rezoning, upzoning downtown. You know, Forest Hill, if you look at the specific plan that's for that area, it really only speaks to commercial development in that area. So opportunities for creating mixed-use developments there. And putting, again, putting the zoning enough that the private property owners there see that there's an economic argument for them to redevelop. So we'll be doing economic analyses to make sure that the zoning we've put in place is actually feasible.
Awesome. Thank you. I look forward to the process.
I thank you both very much for the report. I just have one question. What's been the impact of the SB nine? In Pacific Grove, it's probably the most dramatic or significant bit of housing legislation in years that's come down the pike from Sacramento. Has it had an impact? And if so, what has been that impact?
I I can just state, I see Allison just popped on, but I can't hear her.
You can't hear you, Allison.
Okay, well, no, it looks like that question is going to have to wait.
I can give you a small answer, but I'll just say that we have had some interest and inquiries come into our office and when there's, when you don't have another, a water meter, that pretty much stops any lot split. So some people are coming in and they do have water. They do have an extra meter that they could utilize for a lot split. And I know that many jurisdictions throughout California are just looking at SB nine, how is this going to affect us? The Turner Center did a study, a lot of studies in certain jurisdictions to see how many more units it might create within jurisdictions, but was a little small, so they didn't include Pacific Grove. But I would say right now, with the lack of water, that's going to kind of stall SB nine lot splits in the city.
I maybe this is a side conversation, but I heard Mr. Driscoll said this housing element exercise for to meet Reno numbers. We can assume that we have as much water as we need, unlimited amount of water. I've put words in his mouth.
Not what I said, but
So I guess you could say if that's the case, then then SB nine could have a significant impact and it's a question for another day.
Well, we're going to talk sorry. We're going to talk a little bit about
Pardon, sorry.
We'll talk a little bit about it on April 20th, but I'll just say upfront, it's unlikely that we'll have many units to count towards the housing element due to SB nine. And the state just provided guidance on that, just like a week or two weeks ago. Because of the economics of your land and the value of single-family homes in Pacific Grove, the likelihood that someone's going to convert a single-family home to a duplex is pretty low. Not to say that some people won't do, but it's not going to be a wholesale change and it's not going to be a large number of units.
Well, I look forward to some interesting conversations in the future. Mayor Paul Tim McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. Now we're talking about water, which could probably be its own meeting itself, but at the state level, are is anyone advocating or especially, you know, obviously on the central coast for water to be used, additional meters, if the project is 100% dedicated to affordable housing, are there like, is there lobbying or conversations happening with the state water resources?
Monterey, City of Monterey is doing that. Unsuccessfully so far.
Yeah, what we keep hearing is the two state agencies really just aren't communicating, communicating. We have one state agency telling us build the housing and another with this moratorium, so they need to be in a room together.
Okay, thank you for that.
Maybe I need to have a workshop for them.
That's right.
And you're right. Talking about water, we could go for days. So again, thank you very much. We're going to be hearing a lot about this in the future, right? Mr. Harvey?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, you finished with this item. I just had a thing for for the next steps.
Yeah.
Okay, apologize. Looking at what we have ahead of us and looking that it's 9:15, I just wanted to ask if in all the items that we have to consider, if we could please get nine B accomplished, that's the contract for the auditors.
Let's just, I think we can run through these four. But yeah, so we'll get through nine B for sure. All right, now turning to the former 7A, the water waitlist timing. Oh, I'm sorry. I do, yes. Mr. Harvey, yes. Heights. Okay, I was missing that. Let's do let's go ahead and do 12A. This, if you could put up the slides. Do we have the slides available?
Yes, we do. Deputy City Clerk will be putting those up, Mr. Mayor.
We're doing 12A, the former 12A PG Hotel Home Key Project. Yes. This item, if you put up the first slide, do you see the date on this slide? And remember, we had a conversation about agendas and delaying things and good governance. This is February 16th. So, well, we've continued this item one, two, three times already. And this is one of the reasons why I brought up the subject of agendas, is we just can't keep pushing things down the road. In my opinion. All right. So, okay, well, we've covered my first slide, so let's move on to the second one. And recommendation from February 16th, it was fulfilled. Ms. Wyatt did hold a project Home Key Community Outreach, I believe it was March 14th. Okay, next slide. Right. So just quickly reviewing, we did council approved authorization for an application to HCD, who is providing us with these Rena numbers. And for a $15 million hotel located in Pacific Grove to be converted to a permanent supportive housing. And so this one, this slide now is out of date, obviously. And, and so I'm going to ask some questions and then going to turn the floor over to Ms. Wyatt to provide some additional information. So the question is, is at this point, where are we with this project, the application to the, to the state? Do we have staff? Are you looking actively for a location? Have you identified a potential location? Those sort of questions would be very helpful. Next slide. I just spoke to that. Next. All right. And public outreach. So we've done some of that. There is a, one or two web pages on the city website that provide project home key information. And what came out after the approval of the project application was a question is, what are the cities, specifically, what are the cities obligations? And these are, I believe they're 55 year obligations. So it's long term for the city of Pacific Grove. What specifically, so the city's going to be signing on the dotted line to the state. And what specifically are those, those responsibilities? And we're going to have an agreement. I, the words on this slide are partnership. I don't, I don't know if that's, maybe that's an accurate description, but what specifically is the city's obligations or responsibilities to the, the company Shangri-La Industries that was slated to be the, the owner and maintaining the property? And then the similar question is what specifically are the city's responsibilities in an agreement or contract with Step Up Second Street, which was proposed to provide the, the support services, the permanent support housing, the permanent support facilities or services for the, the residents? Next. All right. And then of course, specifically, what about the, the finances? I think probably some of this is, would be certainly unknown at this point, but I believe the first five years, specifically, what are the components of the finances that not only purchase and rehabilitate the facility, but also on the, the rehabilitation, excuse me, the, the resident supportive services and the operation of the facility? And then what, longer term, what are the financial outlooks? Where would finances come longer term? And then just to point out, if it is, if it is a hotel motel that's converted, then there's obviously, there's a, a tax loss. It becomes a, I believe it becomes the property taxes, loss as well as the DOT. Next. And then this is a point that maybe is best addressed by examples. We now know that there's several Home Key projects that are going up or have been in operation in Monterey County. And this addresses the concerns more of the neighborhood, you know, what, what is the impact on the neighborhood where the Home Key Project is operated? And of course, this slide speaks to the, the worst concern, the worst outcome, or the most significant concerns about drug use and, and crime. And, and then lastly, about how is the site maintained? And, and some of these questions I think can be well addressed by looking at where this project Home Key has already been in place, believe in Salinas. We have one facility that's been in place in operation now for a year. I'm not sure. Anyhow, next. And then the questions come up about the residents. Can they be people that were from Pacific Grove? And what kind of supportive services are available? And questions about transportation, it's not in our city center, and we don't have much in the way of any medical facilities. So questions about transportation. And then apparently there's a quota system for categories of residents. And then questions about, will there be families? I believe, you know, a number of these things is why you've already provided answers to, I'm just reiterating what came to mind at the, in the middle of February. Next. Yeah. And that concludes my presentation. So we'll turn it over to you.
All right. Great. Thank you.
And I think you have some slides already in this agenda packet, right?
I do, yes. So I think we can put those slides up. And I can go through those, probably, would you like me to go through my slides or kind of start addressing these questions first?
No, please do your slides.
Okay, great. I've got your questions down, so I'm ready. So our project Home Key meeting, which was very well attended, we had over 50 people attending. So that was very exciting. And I just want to say that I'm very grateful to our community for participating in, in that discussion. And I thought that people were very respectful in their discussions. People came to, I heard people in the small group discussion saying, I disagree with you. And it was just very respectful. And it was okay. Everybody had varying opinions coming into this workshop. And that's to be expected, because there are a lot of people feel there are a lot of unknowns in this type of housing, when you're not used to this new type of housing coming to the community. So that's, so thank you, everyone. Thank you for those of you who attended on the city council. Very appreciative. And I also want to say that I appreciate some of the concerns brought up amongst my colleagues and the city staff. And we really talked through things. So that was fantastic. Our police department, when it had a lot of questions. And so we had a special one-on-one meeting with Step Up and them to address their concerns. So all valid things when we're entering new territory and new types of housing. So our project Home Key meeting, next slide. We did, one of my interns wanted to present tonight, but he ended up getting sick. So I'm working them too hard, I think. Our German interns, but Philip Mull had done a survey and they handed it out. And basically, the survey, we provided the survey at the beginning. We did a presentation with Todd Lipka, the CEO of Step Up, provided a presentation, and also Roxanne Wilson, the Coalition of Homeless Services Providers Director and our Continuum of Care Director. Then we went into breakout sessions and we followed up with an additional survey, basically at the end. So I'm not going to get into too much on the survey details. It was just more of what our interns kind of wanted to, to do during the meeting. So if you can go to the next slide. But mostly, it's hard to see here, so I apologize. But mostly, people did agree in the end, most people did agree to, that a project Home Key project is something that the community is interested in pursuing. There were some people who disagreed completely, a small percentage, probably about 18%. And then there were some that changed their mind during the meeting. And so those are all great things that we, we, we did in that community meeting. I would say it was a real workshop, like we really worked hard. So those are just some of the things that my intern would have presented tonight if he had not been ill. So I just wanted to kind of go over that quickly, that we did do some analysis while we were in the meeting. But I'm going to go ahead and move forward with the questions that you had initially brought up. And I did want to let everyone know that on our website, we had initial FAQs based on your questions, Mayor. And those are posted to the website. After this meeting, we had additional questions. So I asked people to write down their questions. We wrote down some questions. And I have a follow-up FAQ that is on our website, that gets into more detail based on the questions that we had during the public meeting. And so those are all on our website, if you're interested. And the main thing I want to say about project Home Key is this is an unprecedented funding source made available by the state of California. Nothing like this has ever been seen before. Nothing at the federal level, because a lot of housing, we rely on federal and we rely on state resources. So there's nothing like it. I think the federal government is taking note of what's going on here in California with Project Room Key and Project Home Key. And Project Room Key was an amazing program that began with the COVID crisis, where we wanted to take the most vulnerable in our community, the highest risk people, and get them off the street so that they would be less vulnerable to death if they ended up contracting COVID. So then the state said, well, what are we going to do now that we put people into Room Key? And our, our county did stand up a Room Key program, and it's been very successful. Most people who have gone in there have stayed in their housing. They want to be housed. And so the next step was, well, what do we do now? We have all these people housed in hotels. We don't want to put them back out on the street. And that's how Home Key became available to communities in the state. So it's a very, the first round of Home Key, we had a very rapid turnaround. Same thing with this one. It was a very rapid turn around, turnaround when the application came out and it came to you. So I apologize, it came on consent, but I had very little time. Sorry.
I just need to jump in really quick. We, we don't have a lot of time this evening. I'm just going to answer an elephant in the room question. We don't have an application currently for project Home Key. And we are planning on coming back to the council at a future date for a discussion with you if you want us to submit another application. So that, that is one of the main things I want you to know. Sooner than later, you have a lot of items to cover tonight. But we do plan on returning. We don't have a date in mind. We'd like to consult with you on that for the council to have a discussion if you want us to pursue another application. We don't have one currently. We don't have a site identified. We don't have anything along those lines.
That does cut to the chase.
It does, yeah.
Okay, but I don't want to cut anybody else off.
We, we have a lot of items to cover tonight. I mean, there's, she did some fantastic work. I don't want to diminish that, but we have a lot of things to cover this evening.
Public comment, then. I see we have 36 people online. A lot, of course, our staff. Do we have anyone wishing to make a public comment?
Yes, we do. Beth, you have the floor.
Welcome. That's right.
Yes, I'm back. Thank you. I did go to the March 14th session, and it was like it was explained. It was well done and very much appreciated. And I, I just wanted to support this project. I think it, it's, it's not scary. I think maybe if the council recognizes or puts it out there as a, it, it, the, the numbers are small. It's not, it's not as big as in Salinas or anything. It, it fits our community. And, and the thing is that we have similar programs already. We have the Bridge Program. We have Gateway Center. We have the Beacon House. So it's not unlike what we've done in the past. You know, it might be a slightly different population, but not that much different. And I really think that that's the way it should be projected and portrayed and, you know, and take scariness out of it. It's not scary. And put a human faces to it and human stories to it. And I think it would be successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Esther Malkin?
Welcome.
Hello again. I just wanted to echo what Anastasia was saying. This is a once in a blue moon opportunity for PG to set an example for the rest of the peninsula to do something that hasn't been done before. That needs to happen, because as I mentioned before, you know, homelessness isn't going away. And the stigma that's attached to homeless shelters and any kind of housing is kind of outdated. You know, we've, there's data that shows that the, the number one group of people that are becoming homeless more and more are middle aged women. We have, you know, families that are living in cars. We have workers that are living in cars. Homeless doesn't necessarily mean living in an encampment. Homeless means you don't have a permanent residence. So the stigma around homelessness and that word in general has had to, has to be addressed and re-educate the public to understand that you could be standing next to people that are serving you in hotels, or coffee shops, or retail shops, that are homeless and you don't even know it. It's not, everybody thinks automatically that homelessness, homelessness means someone who's living in an encampment. That's not the case. So it's really important to re-educate and remove the stigma. And again, you know, this is, this is be, will be such a missed opportunity. If you can't get something done with this funding, it's unfortunate that the timing wasn't better. But it can be done if you just have, you know, more support. And Anastasia's, you know, a great partner for you guys to tap into. She's got so much knowledge that it would be a shame not to be able to do something like that. And, and if you could get it done, hopefully. be able to do something like that. And if you could get it done, hopefully, other cities on the peninsula would be able to copy your project and use it as a template. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maria Tracy?
Welcome.
Hi there. Thank you for taking my comments. I think core to this question, you know, I take care of a brother who has been homeless. He now lives in supported housing, in subsidized income housing in San Jose. He has many, many mental health and physical health issues. So I am very, very, very sympathetic to this cause. I think the thing that has been difficult has been the lack of actual transparency. Nowhere have I understood who are the homeless, or those people that are homeless, that are experiencing homelessness, that we want to help. And I don't think that the conversation has been that open. I have written every council member, at least twice, the mayor three times, Ms. Wyatt once, and not a single person told me about the homeless workshop, or the whole Project Home Key workshop. That's not transparency. I should have had at least one person say, hey, Maria, you're interested in this. Attend this meeting. Not one. You know, and so I think that, you know, I take issue with Mayor Protem McAdams', you know, characterization of people having a meltdown. I don't think it's about that they don't want to help and do better. I think that there's a lack of transparency, and we are being pushed to do things that may or may not be within our scope of practice or the resources that we have available. And I think that, you know, it's been not very forthcoming to not talk about Shangri-La. Shangri-La is a real estate investment company that we are partnering with. They are buying, they will acquire properties on the taxpayer dollar, and we will be left to somehow support that. In that memorandum for the state, it says that the municipality could be held to matching funds for each door that is redeveloped up to $100,000. I don't know. I just listened to the budget report. I don't know what our pocket is. If we're talking about helping families, is it better to just give a family, you know, an extra $300, $500 a month to help them make their rent? Is it better to provide childcare? That is something that we can do on our budget. I just question the thoroughness of the methodology to make this decision, to define the plan, to define our goals, to see if we can afford that goal, and really, why we would just give this to Shangri-La without competitive bids? Just because Salinas does it, doesn't mean we should. They have ten times the budget. That is coming from you, Mr. Mayor. Ten times the budget. So I think that's what people are upset about, is the lack of transparency, the lack of true discussion. Not that they don't want to help. I really, I don't think that that's the issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Angela Lawrence Endimer?
Welcome.
Thank you. I know at five o'clock, you were all in closed session. But on the five o'clock news, KION led off with a whole story and video, all about a whole Latino neighborhood up in arms over the Salinas Inn Home Key project in Salinas, and the lack of process and transparency in their neighborhood and outreach. And they had a whole lot to say. So I'm sure you can go and look at the KION news story on that. And that was today at five o'clock news. So just a thought there of getting some more information, because it all had to do with process again. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John Tilly?
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. Thank you, staff. My name's John Tilly. I'm a Pacific Grove citizen, supportive of this constructive conversation. This is an effort to help the least fortunate amongst us. The care is in place beyond just housing to help people have a better life. And I'm fully supportive of the conversation to take our community in that direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Linda?
Welcome.
You'll need to unmute yourself. Linda, you have the floor.
Oh, can't get, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I want to express that I agree very thoroughly with what your previous speaker, Maria, had to say. I don't think that the process has been very transparent. There was one workshop that I'm aware of, and I was out of town, but I did write to Anastasia, and I never heard anything about that meeting. I did let her know I would not be able to be there, but I was interested, and I gave my opinions. I'd rather assist our own local youth and seniors. I'd like our help to people, our help for people to start here at home with our own local people that are needing some assistance. And I really object to the Bridge and the Beacon House being compared to this project. These are people who have faced prison and other horrible adversities, and are actually living in residency under programs 24/7. So it is not at all the same as handing homeless people the key to the hotel. Also, I feel like, although we're all trying to say these people are perfectly fine, and they just ran into bad situations, the Government Department of Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration says that of the homeless population in the US, forty percent, or thirty to forty percent, excuse me, are alcoholic, ten to fifteen percent are drug addicted, and twenty to twenty-five are mental health impaired. And that is anywhere from sixty percent to eighty percent. And I'm not sure we're doing anything except subsidizing those addictions if we don't put that money towards programs rather than residency, which will also, of course, bring in additional homeless people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Another hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We'll bring it back to council. Any council comments? Mayor Protem McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for bringing this forward, even though it wasn't very timely. So since then, the end of February, Salinas was awarded $29.5 million for two additional Home Key sites. And the end of March, King City was awarded $12.4 million for one 45-unit Home Key site. So, and all three of these sites are utilizing Shangri-La and Step Up. So I'm just wondering, knowing that we don't have an application, what is the, I mean, I know that the state has a certain amount of money allocated towards Home Key. Do you, Anastasia, did we miss the opportunity? Is there still plenty of money? Is timing of the essence? I just would like to maybe better understand where our opportunity is.
So we probably missed this round now. It's pretty much oversubscribed, from what I understand. There may be some slight amount of bucket of money left. So I would need direction from council, where to go, how to go forward. And I will say that there will be another round. There's a round three coming up, so maybe we can discuss that direction. And so we'll see.
Thank you so much. And then, can you describe how the city identifies a site and what that process looks like?
So if we were to move forward with a Home Key project, we would probably work with a broker. I think that would, that's the best way to do it, is to work with a broker that's local and might understand which hotels. Because, again, it's not like you put a for-sale sign on the hotel. There's a lot of negotiations. Hotels don't like to advertise that they're under sale, or potential sale, because they could lose people coming to their hotel and revenue if the sale doesn't go through. So it's not something that's advertised out in the open. So a broker would do that. Then we would come, we would maybe identify a site, come to the city council to submit an application, and then move forward. And again, the timeline will be very tight, even if we get to round three. So don't expect that we're going to have, you know, six months to a year to submit an application. It'll probably be two months.
Thank you for that. And then, so a follow-up question. Can we apply without having a site identified? Can we apply with the intent of we're looking for sites?
No, the application is very detailed. We have to provide financial analysis, and that is done by the developer's financial team to determine if the project would be viable for the 55 years of deed restrictions that will occur on the property. There's also a lot of other analysis that goes in. You have to obtain housing vouchers to subsidize the units. So it's very complex.
Okay, perfect. So what I'm hearing, then, is if the council has the will to move forward, and potentially, you know, try to identify a site for a Home Key project, it would be timing of the essence, right? So could we, at the same time, still continue outreach? So when and if an application comes to council, if members of the public are upset and saying, I didn't hear that there was any outreach, we sort of like have been continuing outreach? Does that make sense?
Yeah, that'd be great. We'll continue outreach.
Perfect. Okay, great. Thank you very much. I definitely support, you know, giving direction to keep going down this path, trying to find a site, and applying for the third round. I think it's definitely critical. And, you know, to be the only peninsula city to sort of raise our hand, even if not all the stars align and we're able to make this happen, at least we're standing up. And I think that that's important. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Clay?
Thank you, Your Honor. As I understand it, Anastasia, the third round of funding is coming up in September. Is that right?
That's my understanding.
The part of the process in the whole Home Key application is to have a pre-application consultation. And that happens before an application is submitted. It's a pre-application. And HCD just wants to see if, you know, all the ducks are in a row. So I believe there was a pre-application consultation for this previous application back in October. It seems to me the time to engage council is when staff goes up to HCD with this pre-application consultation, which we didn't hear about. We only heard about it when it was put on a consent agenda item for approving an application. We never heard about the pre-application consultation. So I think it's important to engage council early, so that then the public can be engaged to understand what the project is. Someone mentioned unprecedented funding. It's true, but at no, you know, nowhere along the process did we get an idea of how much it was actually going to cost us. Yeah, it's government money for a private developer to go out and obtain this property in partnership with us. But we're on the hook for providing some of the services and the costs to provide that. And we never understood that. So if we're doing additional outreach, we need to know how much that, that those services are going to cost. We're certainly going to have to address that once a site has been identified, and then staff goes up to HCD with this pre-application. I've heard 55 years, but one of the things I learned when I attended the workshop, and I spoke with one of the representatives from Step Up, is that the duration of the project can be as short as eight years. So when you sign up for 55 years, there's an expectation that the city is going to pay a lot more to provide the services. So that needs to be understood, and what the trade-offs are there. So I, my takeaway, again, the mayor and councilmember Pedori attended the workshop. I did as well. My takeaway was that the public isn't necessarily saying no. They're just saying no to what the process was, and that there needs to be a lot more engagement on it. And I think if we're going to, if we are going to do that, that's the only way.
Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to state emphatically, I appreciate the desire for outreach. We are not going to do any outreach until we have clear direction and a subsequent city council agenda item. We are not going to embark upon outreach now. We will schedule an agenda item. I will work with the mayor on this, and we'll get that on the agenda. But we are not going to do any outreach between now and then. Certainly, people ask us questions. We're going to respond to questions. But nothing is going to happen until council has a discussion, provides direction, and then we know what we're doing. That's what we're doing. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
I was just going to say, you know, I don't feel the outreach is timely tonight, because there's no project site. There's no project, there's no application pending. So, yeah, I'm not going to go. It's late, so I'm going to stop there, but.
Councilmember Pedori?
Yeah, I wanted to mention that I attended that meeting, and like, I heard similar comments. And what I got from the meeting is that there's still some outstanding questions to be answered. I know, though, the FA, Frequently Asked Questions is, I would say, a living and breathing document. So it gets continuously updated. But as we heard from a couple of speakers tonight, a couple of callers tonight, too, is that potentially, we need another workshop. I recommend having another workshop, just to clear some of the outstanding questions that are there. There are some questions from today's meeting, too. But in general, I'm supportive of whatever we're doing to address the homelessness situation within the city. And I'll be open to any creative strategies that we have. One final question I had was, the recommendation for this agenda item says, direct city manager to begin public outreach. So that's no longer under consideration, correct? Correct. So it's a different outcome altogether, correct?
This agenda report was written February 16th, and the outreach was already conducted on March 14th.
Okay, got it, got it. Okay, so just a couple of comments is to have another workshop, and then, basically, updating the Frequently Asked Questions if needed. So.
Councilmember Tom Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just would, I don't really have a motion to make, but I would, if I may, or maybe I do, I would motion that we be done with this topic and not give any direction for any more outreach. Or, I mean, that's what the city manager said, so I think we should move on.
Okay. If there is no further motion, then this agenda item is finished.
Yeah, I appreciate all the great work, and the FAQ is awesome, and it's posted online.
And the city manager would like to move on to the former item nine B next. So if it so pleases council, that's what we'll do.
Ms. Hannah, are you still with us?
Yes, I am. Sorry about that. Good evening, once again, Honorable Mayor, council, and members of the public. The item that I have is to authorize the award of a one-year agreement with Siobhan and Associates for audit services for fiscal year 2122. I don't have a presentation for you this evening. The city contracts with Siobhan and Associates for annual audit services. A new contract is needed for fiscal year 2122. Due to physician vacancies, when the Admin Services Department, we have not had the opportunity to go out and initiate a request for proposal. Time is of the essence in securing a contract, so we wouldn't have time to go through the full bid process to be able to be put on an audit schedule for an interim audit in May or June, with the second half of the audit being in October. We looked at what the prior audit costs were in relation to the bid process, and the in relation to the bid process, and the bids range from 33.5 to 48.365. But because this is a professional services agreement with a with an accounting firm, it is something that is also subject to qualitative review as well. Siobhan and Associates is proposing to provide audit services for us at a cost not to exceed $47,000. And this includes the addition of a new single audit requirement. And the new single audit is is due to receipt of of ARPA funds. If the city has over $750,000 in federal expenditures, it's subject to this different audit, which is a little more intense because it does go through additional control tests and it looks specifically at a significant amount of the documentation that goes along with these grants to ensure that they meet the requirements. Siobhan and Associates is also providing us with eight hours of training in relation to the single audit and the procurement standards that go along with it. The procurement standards are one of the more challenging parts of the audit of the audit related to federal grants. A lot of the documentation is similar, but the procurement is a little bit more stringent. Siobhan and Associates also provides us with assistance with with general questions through the year. And they are also looking at our proposed procurement manual and also providing some insight, and they plan to do some training with us on that, tentatively in May is the is the date that we're looking for. So we are getting a a new engagement partner as part of this audit. It's good to have a a fresh eyes perspective. It's not a requirement, but it is a recommendation so that you have a fresh look at the city finances. But at the same time, like moving to a new audit firm, you do not have to go through the process of having your chart of accounts outlined and some of your additional processes documented. This is something that is shared with the the new audit engagement partner. The staff is recommending entering into a one year agreement with Siobhan and Associates for audit services for fiscal year 2122. And that concludes my presentation.
Do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir. Linda?
Welcome.
Linda, you have the floor? Linda, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Do we have anyone else wishing to speak to this item?
No, we don't.
Did she just disappear?
Uh, no.
It appears so.
She's still there.
She's back.
All right. Linda, if you wish to speak, just go ahead and interrupt. Let's go on to council discussion on this item.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Councilmember Coletti?
Thank you, Your Honor. We first hired this firm, I guess, in 2015. Is that right, Tori, about seven years ago?
That is correct. It was for the 201516 audit.
So what's best practices for keeping an auditor engaged? I mean, you you spoke of fresh eyes and a fresh look. But isn't it standard practice, best practice to kind of till the earth, as it were, so that you get a new audit firm coming in periodically so that you essentially preserve the safeguards that an auditor is supposed to provide?
Yes, it's typically, and it is a recommendation, it can go between five and seven years. But one of the other options is to get a new engagement partner within the firm because they would be the ones who would be looking at items. So that is something that some cities have done.
Okay, so it's the same firm, just different personnel? Is that the idea?
Yes, and it's a different person supervising the audit and reviewing all the items.
So Mr. Chauvin is no longer going to be doing it? Is that is that right?
He is not going to be our engagement manager. We have asked him to retain to speak at the council meetings just because we've had some challenges with one of the other other individuals. He, as engagement partners, they review each other's work as well as part of the audit process. So there is going to be somebody new looking at our audit. It's just Sheldon Siobhan is not going to be that direct person.
Okay, I'm still a little concerned that they were not turning over the the actual firm where it's still going to be in house. But I do appreciate you mentioning that there is a new engagement partner, as it were. Mr. Chauvin promised he would bring back a overview of Airbnb's VCA or the voluntary collection agreement. Has he done that yet?
No, he has not done that. He was going to do that as part of this this year's engagement.
Okay, so I better vote yes then.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Councilmember Smith?
I was serious when I made the motion before.
Yeah, but you weren't called on, so.
I wasn't?
No.
You looked at me? Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously 70. Right, it's after 10 o'clock, so who would like to make a motion? Councilmember Tomlinson?
I move that we continue the three, four remaining items to a later date and depart? What's the word?
Continue.
Adjourn, thank you. That's the word.
Not not to a later date, but to the the next council meeting?
Yes, I was going to say the same thing.
No.
To the next council meeting.
To the next council meeting.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries 70.